All right.
All right, welcome, everybody. This is the Town Council regular meeting. It's Tuesday, March 14th. It is 6:34 PM. We'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. If you all please rise and face the flag.
Pledge allegiance, we will do the flag, United States of America, a good republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And 245 was going to be here tonight, but obviously the snow got in the way. So we'll see you guys next time. All right, Penny, will you do the roll?
Okay, I gotta look multiple here. Uh, Robin. Rita Bettino.
Here.
Okay. Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Archimski.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
The coffin's coming.
On his way.
Mike Morrow.
Is on his way. He's coming from Long Island.
Maria Norton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary Orman.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Okay, good. And Penny Young. We're with the exception two people. Everybody, yeah, and they're coming.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Uh, before we get into um, public comments, I just had, there's basically four housekeeping items for everybody. Um, number one, as you know, last week we talked about meeting with um, some of the residents on the 824. Um, I had a meeting this week with Ira Bloom, Joe Palo and Barbara Wills on the subject. It was great. We met for about an hour, very good dialogue. Very detailed exchange between um, Mr. Palo and Mrs. Willis and and Ira talking about a 24. Agreement on 90% of points made, I think. Um, minor differences of opinion with um, Ira's memos um, on the 1024, on his 1024 memo. Um, Iris said in an email to me, he was impressed by Mr. Palo's extensive research and hopes that some understandings were reached and he believes there were. And uh, I think both Mr. Palo and Mr. Wells appreciated, Mrs. Wells appreciated meeting with Ira. And you know, at the end of the day, this 824, um, everything has to come back to this council. And we would have, if there was ever a lease written of any kind of any town property based on the Bach Amendment, it's gotta come back through to us and we can amend a lease and and structure a lease anyway. We we've done so on many occasions. So uh, that would hold true here as well. And and the second item on the, that we talked about a little bit was the, the council is definitely exhausted on option A at West, at the West Tower. And we we've sent that message loud and clear. I think we're all in agreement that option A um, is a nonstarter. But um, we're told that there may be an option B coming our way that could be discussed as early as uh, the end of April. So we'll wait for that to get to come our way. But um, you've all spoken loud and clear and sent the message that we are not really um, thrilled with option A. So I'll leave that where that is. Uh, third item was Kelly Green. Um, Mike Morrow sent a note about the um, sewer on Kelly Green. We, Mike and I spoke on that and we will um, set up a meeting uh, in the, after the budget season is over to get that moving along. And then finally, uh, up the number four on my list was the Playhouse. I I sent an email out to everybody just offering a tour on Thursday before a meeting 6:15. Hopefully you guys all got that note. Hopefully you can attend. It's um, it's really gonna be interesting to see that the Playhouse in the existing format of what it looks like right now. It's down to the brick. So um, it'd be great to have everybody walk through. So let me know if you can come, get a headcount and I get that going. And that is it. Anybody have any questions? Okay, move on to public comments. Uh, public comments, members of public are welcome to speak on to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name, street address. Comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Would anybody like to address the council? Either here or online. Anybody in the camp in this room? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, great, thank you. Uh, all right. So next up, we have the uh, oh yeah, minutes. Sorry. Thank you, Tucker. Uh, approval of minutes, regular meeting held on February 15th, 2023, special meeting on February 27th, 2023. Uh, any changes, corrections? Anybody out there? You guys all set? I don't see any hands raised out there. Nope, good.
Stand as presented then.
All right, minutes stand as presented. Thank you very much. Item number four, Town Council overview of the budget. Uh, first up, we have Todd Lavieri here who is going to speak and hand over the uh, hand over the budget.
What do you want me? I asked Josh to join me.
Oh, good. Welcome to you both.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
All right. So I'll go through um, an overview of everything. Something's old, something's new, as of even this weekend. And then questions, right? You want?
Yeah.
Time for, you're good. Okay. All right. So just uh, a few thoughts and thanks for having us here to give you um, what the, what the advertiser didn't get about that for opening comment. Um, you know, also the stunning, I call it the stunning article. Yeah. Um, so just a few comments as to where we finished up. First, we're in strong financial shape. Um, it seems like every year these past four budget cycles, I would say, there's been some kind of major challenge. Everything, everywhere, all at once. That's how I feel sometimes. Um, but over the fast, past four or five budgets, I would say, we've worked through them all pretty well, in my opinion, and they've been tricky, but uh, but a lot of good teamwork. Um, so let me just give you some facts and figures. Overall, the budgeted um, expense increase in the budget we sent you is 3.14. Not bad in this environment. Um, the total BOE budget, 112 million. It's about 67% of the budget. Uh, the amount to be raised by taxation in the budget, up 5.5%. We reduced this number by uh, 5.8 million from the budget that we received from the Board of Selectmen. So that allowed us to take the originally proposed increase in the amount raised by taxation from 8.9% down to the increase I just said, 5.5%. So in other words, the Board of Finance reduced the proposed increase by 38%. So you might ask, how can we have our expenses up 3.1, but our increase up to 5.5? Revenue. Revenues are down um, 11% year over year. Some of that's because we had a bond premium piece of revenue that we had and some other things. So that's, that's uh, and then conveyance fees in our budget are down. Uh, not that the values of the homes are down, but the number of homes being sold is down, and that's driving the 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 expected um, uh, conveyance fees down. The average annual increase then um, of the amount raised by taxation over the past five years, average annual increase, 1.1%. And that includes this year's projected increase. I think we'd be very happy to compete with any town's budget over the past five years with a 1.1% annual increase. We've done, I think, a very good job collectively, watching the spending while funding our schools, our departments, protecting of the town assets, especially roads and buildings. And then as a reminder, over the prior four years, you've heard me say this before, but I think it's important to remember, we we were able to hold the amount of money raised by taxation flat for four years. And if you just use two and a half percent increase each of those years, as other towns had, we would have asked the taxpayers for $18 million more. So we avoided $18 million over the prior four years. And like I say, that's, that's saved forever. Um, so I think it's been a great accomplishment and it isn't just us. It's it's the Town Council. It's it's a lot of people. Um, our rainy day fund, the Unassigned General Fund, has a balance of about 20 million. Uh, the total amount spent on emergency services, 8.3% of the budget, 6% increase. Total amount spent on public works, 6.6% of the budget, an 8% increase. We're seeing inflation hit there. Um, town departments were up 1.8%, so pretty good on the town department side. Um, I would say as we worked on the budget over really the past few months, really starting in in December, we knew economic forces uh, would impact our budgeting and our planning. Um, as I mentioned previously, we knew rising interest rates, we put a chill on housing activity. Um, an engineer, they'll call it contraction in the economy by the Fed with higher rates and declining money supplies, both of those two things. At best will drive economic caution and at worst, you know, potentially recession, economic downturn, job losses and so forth. Um, on the revenue side, this year, we do expect to earn about a million more in interest than we had budgeted because of uh, higher rates and we expect to earn more in interest next year than we did this year because we'll have a full year of higher money market rates. Let's talk about cash management. So very timely this week. A large amount of our general fund is in bankwell. Many of you may know this, but just to have it said, the banking industry uses a mechanism called the Intrify Network. And that network and through that network, our big deposits are spread out and deposited across a network of 2,000 banks. This wasn't a big issue for us. We were more worried about our, is our money collateralized? Is it protected? Is the bank safe? Because we weren't earning anything. Well, now we got and earned 4%. And we got $10 million sitting around, $20 million sitting around. It's legitimate revenue for us. Um, I think, as you know, twice a year, we get a 70 million spike that we get and we have to manage that carefully. Obviously, that's, that's not really available, not available to be invested. It's gotta be used, but um, as we had this opportunity to to earn some money, we wanted to do it in the safest and best way. And so having, using this Intrify Network is really the best thing to do because it spreads the money out over these banks that allows us to keep balances below $250,000. Um, across literally dozens of bankers, 2,000 available, but we probably use, I don't know how many we use actually, probably about 50 banks or so. Um, and that mitigates any banking deposit risk at any one bank. So the cash is safe. So I asked on Friday, oh, by the way, is any of our money in the Silicon Valley Bank? Um, and the answer is yes. So we found out that we had 248,350 dollars in SVB. Um, the amount is safe. It's less than 250. It's FDI insured, of course. Um, so it's risk free. But it was another reminder for us um, to stay very vigilant with our cash, cash assets and protect them through all kinds of these, these types of measures and steps. Our CFO and Treasurer have just done a great job working closely on this. Uh, and with the Board of Finance, we assigned Bob Hamel a year ago to help on this as we were beginning to think we might be able to go earn some money um, on our deposits and he's our Board of Finance's point person with regards to cash management. So the process worked, but we really have work to do. We we still have to stay vigilant. Like I said, when we get these two spikes in January and July, we literally end up with $70 million. We don't want that in a bank that could fail, right? So we've got to be very careful um, as we then we use that money over those, over the next few months. Let's talk about debt. We've reduced the town debt from the all time high of 147 million to a balance on March 1st of 97.5 million. Um, our annual debt expense is about 17 and a half million dollars a year. Um, that we watch very carefully. We have a few big amounts dropping off um, in the next year or two, including Irwin Park. Um, with a lower debt amount to operate from, we can safely add debt for key capital projects. Ongoing school building maintenance, all the things you know and love. Um, over the past four years, we've also issued and refinanced debt at historically low levels. I don't actually have the rate of the debt that that we actually pay. Um, and we we couldn't get that today, but it's it's a great, it's a good number, but I don't have the actual rate. Um, but everything's been refinanced. It can be refinanced at at all of those historically low rates. Um, as you know, we, and that has really saved us millions of dollars over the last few years and will over the next 10 or 15. Um, all of our rates are fixed. They're not variable. Um, we paid on our principal and interest for each bond on a straight line basis. Uh, we reduce our debt by approximately 17 million a year before adding new debt. Um, we've watched these rates bounce around a lot. We are going to issue debt prudently, I would say, um, especially this year. One of the opportunities we have collectively for lower costs in the future is our annual debt expense. Three or four years from now, our actually, our actual debt expense will be closer to 10 million versus 17 um, that we'll pay this year. Of course, that assumes not adding any debt, which we will. Um, but if we can keep an eye on this, we can get that annual expense down to say 13 million or 14 million. That reduction helps absorb future increases anywhere else, right? So we we really want to keep an eye on that. That's why we were so tough on the, I think, on the capital this year and for another reason I'll get to in a minute. Um, I know that won't be easy, but it's something we can make happen. We did prioritize our capital expense budget this year, as we do every year with every department. Um, as we told the departments, we love to buy things when the world is falling apart. That's a favorite thing for us to do. Things are cheaper and they're available. Unfortunately, right now, things are expensive and hard to get. We heard um, from the emergency services chiefs, one to two year wait for an ambulance or a fire truck, one to two years. So here we've proved capital to bring to you. We might not even bomb that thing for two years. Um, we rotate and spread out our purchases, as you know, to avoid getting hit with any one spike in any one year. Um, and this is an expensive year to purchase anything, any goods or services. So we prioritize, we deferred. Um, and we did all that without putting anybody at risk, any schools, any emergency services or town assets. Um, the budget we sent, I think achieves all the important town operating goals. We've funded the schools, we funded the police fire programs on an operating bu- basis. We funded our parks, all the health and human service requests, all the emergency services, town sports, town departments, and so many other important programs and initiatives, including the vast majority of the capital needs for buildings, roads and equipment. Um, through careful spending and planning over the next three years, or excuse me, over the past three years, we've not cut cut school programs, sports, arts, teachers, social programs, or emergency services or safety spending. And I think through a really healthy partnership between the town and the public um, and private investments, we opened up the new library last month and we're working on the sports facilities, Dunning Stadium, needs to be said. The Playhouse Theater and the Movie Theater, all with public and private funding. So as I said, today, we're in strong financial shape. Um, as we've said for decades, this town and the Board of Finance certainly supports our great school system, helping keeping it a leading district. As we've said many times, this takes time, money, commitment and leadership. We want to retain the great schools for the next decade. The Board of Finance will always assess spending and ask how to optimize the money spent. We are not the rubber stamp club. Um, but as I said, we try to find a balance. In summary, the combined economic challenges of inflation, rising rates and economic slowdown have presented challenges to our budget for this coming year, for all of us. We will maintain our financial strength. We will optimize and prioritize our spending and will continuously improve our town assets, our services, and the supports our residents expect, all in an effort to deliver value to the taxpayers and to our residents. Given it's the Ides of March, may you find at least 23 cuts. I had to get that Ides of March joke in before he speaks because I'm sure you're getting something. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Todd.
Uh, that's helpful.
Any questions for Todd or Josh, will we have them?
I have a question. Um, I'm curious, you you took the budget down uh, to five point, you reduced it by 5.8 million. Can you talk a little bit about where those cuts came from?
Yeah, I can talk specifically about where the cuts came from. So I won't read every line item. There are probably 20, but the big ones, um, I would say our pension is more than fully funded. And so our pension committee, working with the actuaries, always puts together what we need to contribute. And in the budget that the selectmen approved, there was, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, I want to say 1.25 million approved? As a placeholder, I shouldn't say, they didn't do their analysis on it. They have to wait till the actuaries get their job done. But when we got their report back, we only needed to put in 200,000. So we saved a million dollars right there. Um, the um, uh, the Board of Ed reduced their, um, there's a Board of Ed operating expense, you could ask Dr. Lutz specifically what they were, but it was about 387 in operating and uh, let's see, another $300,000 in the A deck for the, for our claims on OPEB. And then um, ah, the stop-loss calc. So the stop, there was a calculation for the stop-loss premium. And again, it's a placeholder. It's the problem with trying to do a budget in December, January and February for some of these things that we won't even have the actual data till later this year, or even in the summer, in some cases even September. Um, but the, there's a placeholder for the amount you have to have for the the premium for the stop-loss. And and so the Board of Ed analyzed what that estimate was and they feel comfortable taking that down. So there's another $470,000 there. Um, there were two other areas. So in total, the cuts were 3.7 million. That's of the 5.8. On the, we do have two areas where we're, and we we talked about this on the revenue side and we have the ability with the um, the reserve funds, both on the town side and the, and on the Board of Ed side, for the town's partial portion of what's in an internal services fund. We've asked our CFO to come up with some options as it relates to that, but we think we're, we have too much money in those reserve funds on top of $20 million of other reserve funds. So um, we have $2 million of 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 reductions in the um, in the reserve fund, which we will then use and apply to the health expense. So if you follow that, it's really a transfer from a savings account into the expense line. And that, all those things, two of them are 2 million and there's some other cats and dogs in there for 2.1. So the total's 5.8.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thanks, Kim. Question? Any other questions?
Todd, any uh, surprises? Or?
Um, when we started?
Friends that that are concerning you?
Sorry.
Um, well, on the operating side, I can't say there are any surprises. I think we expected inflation. We have it. I think again, Tiger's done a great job with what he's got, but you know, you just, there's just gonna be things that are more expensive next year than they are this year. And and even though some things peaked and have come down, you know, gas and oil, some of those things are down from what we were paying six or nine months ago. They're still above what was in the last year's budget. So there's some things like that. I can't say those are the, are surprises. Um, on the capital side, we had a negative hit with the HVAC for the movie theater. Um, of I think the total, you could check with Tiger, but I think it was 1.9 million, 1.7 million, 1.9 million dollar surprise on for capital. For lots of technical reasons associated with the the engineering that was done and 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 the rules that changed on air handling right in the middle of us doing the design and the end of the day, the $400,000 solution isn't gonna happen. It's gonna have to be 2.2 million. That was a surprise. Um, and so uh, and then as it relates, no kidding, on uh, on the athletic fields, I think they're, they're really uh, working hard to raise money, private money and have it. Um, but the the scope and size and prioritization of the Dunning Field Program and project and vision was a surprise with the size and you may have seen some of the the back and forth in the last uh, Board of Finance meeting, but we've put a pin in a number to have them work with that contingent on them in April coming back to us with a much more detailed plan. We didn't have a detailed enough enough plan. And if this were any other time of the year, it wouldn't have, it would have been okay. But given it was that meeting and we had to vote on something, we had to put the money aside for you all to have. And you can go through it, obviously, in the next few weeks. And then we'll take a look at it in in April. That was a surprise. All on capital, I would say. I can't think of any operating wise wide. Um,
The revenue you brought up earlier was a bit of a surprise. I mean, that that.
Well, we knew the bond, we knew, we knew we had a bond premium bit of revenue last year. We knew we liked, we got some, but we didn't get anything of that sizing. It was 2.6 million. That's a big help. Our revenues in the budget this year are higher than the 20, than the prior budget, not this budget. So it's not bad, but it's just that we had much more revenue um, last year. And we we had just another thing, sort of really inside baseball. We had, you know, a general, unassigned general fund of of 31 million dollars six years ago. And now it's going to be closer to probably 21 at the end of this year. And that was intentional. 31 is just too much. And so every year, we kept giving back another million or two to the taxpayers by paying down the mill rate with the, with, we talked about this, right? We love this. This question from you. And so um, so every, so now 31 is 21, that's as low as we're gonna go. I mean, that's 12% of the budget. We'd like it to be 15. Um, anywhere between 10 and 20 is a good number. Um, but it's uh, right where we, right where we want it and and so, but that's helped.
And you're showing that $4 million number in there, right?
Yeah, so we probably, we believe we can cover some of that. We won't take 4 million out, but we might take one. Um, and if things come in a little better than expected on the revenue side, we might add one. It's about the closest we can predict.
Uh, when we're talking about.
Yep. So go ahead, Penny first, then Tom.
Sorry, when we're talking about surprises, there's always a comment that goes, well, we should have known. Um, how legitimate and applicable is that to our surprises? Uh, I think the HVAC in the Playhouse is something that we couldn't have known going into the project. Uh, so it's kind of unfair to, you know, put that kind of comment on the Playhouse, but on.
Surprise, but I agree with you. I mean, that's, but that's a surprise.
It's not something we could have known because they changed the.
A hundred percent. Exactly. That's right.
Totally out of our control.
Exactly. Um, be easy on Tiger on that one because everybody else last week was really hard on him.
That's why I'm interested.
Be smiling back there.
Uh, so Tom, Tom Butterworth, you're up next.
Todd, Todd, I appreciated what you said about debt service so much that I know you'll enjoy saying it again. That what you're saying is notwithstanding rising interest rates and growing capital needs, we may well be able to stay below our current level of debt service?
Well, it, we would have just rough math and I'm not prepared to give you the exact numbers, but we pay down 17 million a year. We have 95. We're gonna add 17 million this year. Now you'd think that you you don't stand still because it's over 20 years. So it's a million a year or less. So my, so you know, I'm gonna drop 17. If you know, apples to apples, we'll add, we'll add another few this year. Um, now we have a police station. That's the game changer for us in the short term. So we've got a, we're gonna try to find a way to put that over a three-year window. And so a three-year budget cycle, let me put it that way, not a three-year window, a three-year budget cycle. We could put some this year, some next year and the rest the next year, right? That kind of thing. So those, all of that is in your capital number. There's $52 million of capital, but 32 of it is the police station and the training center. So just remember that. And I'm not gonna bond all that next Tuesday, right? That that might not get bonded for, some of that might not get bonded for two or three years. So we're gonna wa, that's why we have to watch the rates and sorry.
That's an important point because, you know, I've had people say, well, that great news, guys, you took a, you took it from 147 down to 97, but now you're adding 52 back. Well, it doesn't happen immediately. And that's a very, very important.
It's a very important, but yeah, no. So some of the, like I said, we we have an ambulance or a fire truck in there. I I don't think we'll bond for it for, I mean, we have to give them something out of petty cash to get a, an order in or something like that, but we won't pay, we won't pay for that or bond that for, for a year or two. It's a weird year like that because of those things, including the police stations. We're working hard to figure all this out. So just, Tom, to answer your question, if we put out no money in the next two years or three years, that 17 would be nine or 10. That's all incredible that could fall because we pay it off so fast. Um, but we're going to add more. So we're, I'm just saying, if we could keep 97 somewhere between 95 and 105 or one, you know, you know, because as we reduce 17, you add a little bit more than that, right? To states now. It would be great and we'll work hard to do that because it is truly an operating expense benefit for us at some point if we can work that out. So we'll, we'll do, we'll do our best.
Phenomenal. Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Rita.
Todd, first, thank you for the summary. It was really thorough. I I have one question if you, if you wouldn't mind indulging me and it's going back to that fourth, uh, $4 million reduction from the general fund because I I heard you describe it um, on the recording and then what you just said right now confused me. I apologize if you can.
We, we budget, yeah. So what we do is, is we couple of things and I, maybe you know this and I don't mean to be repetitive, but for example, we budget that we will only receive 98.5 of our tax revenues. We're going to get 100. This town pays its bills. It's unbelievable. People walk in in July and say, I don't really want to come out in the winter and pay my bill in January. So I'm gonna pay all now. It's unbelievable. So um, that gives us a million, two, almost $2 million.
Right.
There's two of it right there. So we're giving it in to pay the mill rate down, but we don't have it yet. But we we're pretty confident we're going to get it. And then there are other things where we think we're probably going to maybe earn a little more here or a little something there. There's always, and every year, we've been, my four years, I think we've budgeted five, four and a half to five and a half, to five and a half. Um, and we've used one or two. I don't feel that this year, I don't, I I'm out of my comfort zone after four. My board may override me, but I'm on, I'm out of my comfort zone. I'll tell you what, I don't think we're gonna get up to and conveyance fees. We got a big up, there's a good one. We, in that year, we end up with a million dollar surplus of just conveyance fees over the budget. So that's the way it, we pay that off or pay that down. Worst case is we'd have to use all four. Well, we have it. That's not gonna happen. I think the worst case is we'll, we'll, we'll be at zero. Or maybe we use a little of the four, or maybe we add a little to the, you know, we add a little bit to the general fund. Does that help?
No, it completely helps. I I had the two, but I didn't know about the.
There's just other, other, yeah.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying though.
We want to be careful on revenues, just not, you know, parking fees. They've come back. They're still not at the pre-pandemic levels. Um, other fees are down. We don't have the bond premium. So I'm just, I think revenues, we have to be cautious.
And then one more question. Um, so you had mentioned that we were not taking out as much capital and we're gonna go through that this year. Um, are we then? Are we gonna be, I don't know, stuck or are we gonna have issues kind of years out? Are we pushing off something that's important?
Yeah, it's a great que, that's a great question. So um, we don't think so. We deferred a uh, Command Center vehicle that the um, Emergency Services Team wanted. Um, we don't need it. It's a want. But it's a good want, right? It's a good, nice to have. And we're looking for alternatives to that $380,000 solution. Maybe there's $150,000 solution or something like that. So I feel like that was a, let's go do a little more homework to see if there's a plan B that we could do and afford better. Um, than that one. So we, that was a deferral. Um, we've, we've, we're, there's a couple of field projects that we defer. So I, no, there's nothing, I feel like we're burdening the boards two and three years from now because we kicked the can. The can, the ultimate kick of the can is the police station, right? That, that one, we are done. We just can't kick anymore. Um, but that's uh, that's the only one. I know we're just gonna face the music.
But isn't it, are there, aren't there, I know there's a five-year capital plan. I know there's some big, and I, because I was talking with them, with the fire.
Yeah, sure.
Folks and um, I know that there are other expenses, day expenses that. Folks. And, um, I know that there are other expenses, day expenses that might be coming up and I'm sure you've taken that into consideration.
All of those are, yeah, all of those are either being addressed, can wait. Or some, you know, something. So there's nothing that we pushed out. And in fact, we only, we were only going to push out of the request about two or $3 million. And we did, and then Tiger spent it on us.
You know what? That's, that seems like.
That doesn't seem fair now.
Thank you.
Tom's in smiles from the back of the room right there.
Does that?
Thank you.
Yeah. So we, we'll never ending demand for capital. Fix this, repair this, do this, do that. But we get them done. You know, this is a, we're sitting one solution, right? The schools have been done, but there'll always be more. There'll always be something else. So again, I think if we as a group can try to be in that 15 to 20 million a year. Good things can happen. We're going to be really tested though, for next year, for obvious reasons, because of the police station. We just know way. We can push all that out. So we'll. But it's a good discipline to have just because, because like I said, there's going to be 17 million coming off of that 95 this year. So it brings us all the way back down, right? But we'll tack it back on.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions?
I think the good word is discipline. Repayment is key and it's a heavy repayment schedule and eyes wide open going into replacing debt with more debt or.
More expensive debt too. That's a problem. That's a real, real.
And I think it's short-term. I think in recent markets, um, saying that we have to do it now.
That's right.
It's only going to be more expensive. I don't think it's the case. And it's personal opinion and everyone else can good, you know, have their own opinion. But I do think the discipline that you guys have produced of paying down debt. Historically, and then replacing with additional has been fantastic. I, I, I think it's been a great mapping of the, the way. Uh, you perform and a short-term window paying down debt and replacing with additional projects. I think it's produced excellent results.
We've added, thank you for that. We've added expended capital too. So we don't bond everything. We used to bond every shovel, every brick. So we've now added a few hundred thousand or more every year. Well, that adds up, you know, over five years, you end up not having to bond all that. It's paid for, done, gone, no interest, nothing. And so. We want to not overdo that where you should be using debt, just for obvious reasons. It's been cheap money and it could be spread out over 20 years. It was exactly. And I, I hope you're right. I, I, that is really the way we're thinking about it now that. Like I said, we like to buy things when the world's falling apart. So.
I think it was a key strategy and I think you guys executed and delivered at the right time. This time is, okay, now we're paying, you guys are paying down debt and replacing it, but it's, it's short-term and it's today. So I, I think it's the going on record. I think it's an excellent strategy.
Well, and I, I agree with your points. Also the long-term money is not as high as the short. So that's the other thing, right? So we're seeing a lot of short-term high rate. We don't use that rate. We don't use that money. We use 20-year money. So great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Lou. Anybody else? Anybody else out on Zoom there? Pretty good? Well, Todd, this is our opportunity to thank the Board of Finance and you know, we've followed you guys from December right through to March and you know. We've, I think a lot of us either attended the meetings or we tuned in on Zoom and. You know, the Board of Finance was thorough. They did a great job. Um, all of the members just contributed and you know, I have to thank you. The town of New Canaan is extraordinarily lucky to have you as a leader. You're modest, you're inclusive. Collaborative, you know, pick, pick the adjectives, but you check every box and watching you conduct meetings makes me. Aspire to run meetings like you do. So thank you. Thank New Canaan. Thanks you.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you for this budget. We've got a lot of work to do, but you, you set it up very nicely for us. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I have to thank my board. They are some super smart and everybody's busy and everybody makes time to do the things they need to do. It's unbelievable, unbelievable. All the work that they put in. So. And of course, as the WPCA, we got, you know, a whole nother load this past year, which has been an incredible amount of effort on everybody's part. So thanks for that. I appreciate that. But I have to. Recognize the, the work of everybody else. They did a lot of work and Josh. And our new CFO Ann tremendous. Oh my goodness. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
All right. Moving on, without further ado, here we go. Budget overview, review and discussion of the proposed town budget for the fiscal year 2024. Including a review of the following items. Item number one, consolidated budget overview.
I think Todd kind of gave the overview of all overviews. The only thing I would add is before we start, you have a. Like a cheat sheet of where in the budget book, all of these departments are. So you can just refer to that. They're never lost.
Thank you. And if we do get lost, we know who we're coming to. Good. Thank you. All right. Here we go. Board of Eds, come on up, Brian. Everybody has their budget books, right? They picked them up. Get your, either online or the proposed budget from Brian. In detail for the front of your budget. And those of you on Zoom, Brian's handing out a. An overview that goes in the front of your books. We'll grab. Four, four copies for you. Oh, did you? Good. Oh, he, you have it on your email as well. Yeah, Brian, you'll, Brian, you'll introduce everybody.
Oh, left it.
And the way we set this up, uh, you know, we gave Brian 60 minutes, but I think, you know, we'll try to get through. Probably somewhere around 30 minutes of, of presentation and maybe 30 minutes of Q and A and see, see where it goes. But. Brian's, there's so much that, that Brian has to share. It's, it's his annual. Ability to share where he is in the town and the, and the board event. So we always love hearing from him, but we've all seen the presentation. So. This is sort of an abbreviated presentation.
Yes. So on the advice of somebody who knows me well, I'm going to set a timer. Thank you, Bill. Just to keep an eye on things because when, when we spoke with the Board of Finance, uh, we were three hours in where Todd graciously said, thank you. And, uh, and thank you for, for watching. Before I begin though, I do want to make some introductions. Sitting to my right here is Sean O'Keefe. He is our new Director of Finance and Operations. He joined us beginning in July, July. Made the transition over from Greenwich where he was for a couple of years and then Trump before that. Feels like it's been here a very long time, but I know you haven't had a chance to meet him. So welcome, welcome to Sean again, as we've worked through our first budget season. And to Sean's right is, is Dan. Dan is our new Board of Education Chair. Was elected in a couple of years ago and it's been, uh, since November has been our Board of Education Chair and doing a wonderful job. And, um, I asked him to join us here at the table to say hi, but. That's all. And, uh, and back we have Dan. As you know, Dan is our head of facilities. We have Dr. Carenti. And Mr. Tesper, who's members of our cabinet. So the five of us, Jill, our Deputy Superintendent, Director of Human Resources and our Assistant Superintendent. And then behind them, other Board of Education members as well, Katrina, Erica and Hugo. So.
Thank you all for coming.
And on Zoom, we have our principals and they were all going to be here tonight. And then I got a call from Tucker. Who said, uh, the town council understands if you want to take the meeting from home. So I made that available to our principals who have to be here first thing in the morning, uh, because I will not be having a two-hour delay tomorrow. It's just like we did not have one today because it's winter in Connecticut and we should handle it. Although I did cancel out to school activities under much duress by some of my principals, but, uh, we got the full day in. So very happy about that. To you, thank you. Thank you for inviting us to come. Thank you for, I know the work that you've already put in. Uh, this is a long process. You said you've been following Todd since December. So have we, right? As we've been going through, and actually our process begins even earlier than that. The. Board of Ed begins really internally, we begin in October, November, uh, meeting developing, as you know, and many of you have been through plenty of budget cycles. As we do this work, it's really, we, we, we consider it top-down and bottom-up, right? We certainly the process we're going to follow and the. The steps, the timelines, all of that sort of comes top-down as we figure those things out and what our benchmarks are going to be. But then the budget is built from the bottom up from the folks that are asked to implement it because we believe decisions about the work are best done at the level at which the work is done. So if we really want to know what our teachers need, we need to talk to them about it. If we need to know what others need, whether it's curriculum specialists, others across sport, we need to talk to them about it. Instead of us telling them what we think they need, we want to hear from them. So it's always a very collaborative process as we go through. We do that work, as I mentioned, in October, November, December, we meet with the Board of Education in our budget workshop where we take the time to really talk about. Specific initiatives, direction, uh, how they're aligned with our goals. We, every single member of the administrative team is there. They get up, they talk about. Their building or their program or whatever it is that they're responsible for, uh, and the board event and the administrative team have an opportunity to really kind of workshop that. Any budget ideas. We're not talking about dollars at that point because, uh, one of the many things that makes it wonderful to be in New Canaan is that. You know, the quality of the idea on behalf of children is really the most important decision point. Throughout our work, whether it's our budget, whether it's our decisions in, in what we're doing in the classrooms or in the schools or anything else, it's always putting children first. And so. That workshop, I think is a great reflection of that, the way that we manage that and that, uh, people are able to talk. You thought three hours was a long meeting? We've been in those budget workshops for over five sometimes, you know, because, uh, we get into the weeds, uh, about the ideas, which is really exciting and fun. Again, um, our outstanding Board of Education, as you know, we've got nine members, uh, elected Board of Education, all volunteer, as are all of you, of course. And then our administrative team here and the one person who's not here, uh, but I do want to just thank her is Tracy Haberman. She's our budget director. Uh, and she's the one who's really helping to, um, put the, the budget packet together. She's working all the spreadsheets. She's got them all linked. She's the one who, you know, takes our conversations and makes it so that the rest of the world can understand. In this sort of a document as we do. So I do want to say thank you to Tracy as well, uh, and to everybody that's involved, whether the principals or what have you. This is about as fast as I can talk. And if you ever want, if you want me to slow down or you have a question, just stop me, but I'm, I'm working on four minutes already. So. The, our work in the district itself is guided by five overarching goals and those five goals have been consistent through the years. We've talked about them before, right? Goal number one is our student learning goal. We have a communication goal. We have a, a teacher quality goal, a school environment and safety goal, and then a stewardship goal. Those goals are, are the same. They might change a little bit. They evolve a little bit over time, but the idea is the same. What changes annually are the indicators and the actions that we're taking underneath each of these goals. So in aggregate, there might be 35 different sort of iterative. Indicators and steps that we're taking in order to further our efforts in each of these five large domains. It keeps us focused, keeps our work, uh, consistent, sort of serve as our North Stars. We're doing this. And so everything in our budget. Aligns back to one of these five goals, the indicators underneath them and things we're doing. And as you know, as we build our budget, we create the budget assumptions and related priorities. Which sort of it, we create the, but the district goals, they go from administration to board, to administration, to board, to our administrative team, district-wide, to our staff and other things. And then as brief, before we get into budget, we build those budget assumptions and related priorities to show how the. Initiatives and priorities that are identified in the district goals are being resourced through the budget because. A budget's not a spreadsheet, certainly not for, for boards of education and schools, right? If you. We've always said, and I truly believe, if you want to understand a school, a school systems, values and mission and beliefs, look closely at how they spend their resources. We all have finite resources and where we, we put ours, I think speaks volumes about who we are, what we believe on behalf of kids. For instance, uh, over the last couple of years, we've been working on the initiative around school start times. And we're very proud to say this is the first year that we've implemented them. And really. Mostly to a person, people are very surprised to reflect on the fact that this is year one. It's gone very, very well. And that's thanks to all of the pre-planning that, that went on. I mean, we made plenty of time to do it. The, uh, all the thought, the energy and really the, the collective voice of the folks that were involved, right? I mean, when I go back to. All of the meetings that Dr. Carenti and I had with staff, with students, with parents, with, you know, whether it's focus group, some of you were involved with focus groups over in the Wagner Room, other things. So the end of the day, the change, while not disruptive or maybe not transformational, has been described by kids and teachers and parents as. Taking the edge off of their morning, making the day a better, a more positive start every day. Uh, and giving them that little bit of a release valve so that that pressure they felt, even again, the half an hour. What it means for kids that we were, the earliest pickups prior to the shift were before 6:30 in the morning. We were picking up kids at 6:26, 6:28 in the morning. Now, because of the way it's all worked out, it's at or after 7:10 in the morning. So even though it's a half an hour shift in start time, it's more than a 40-minute shift in the pickup time for those kids. Because we've got extra buses, more buses with the elementary schools on the same tier. So by having more buses, we've shortened the runs, fewer kids on them, et cetera. Working out the kinks and we'll always be doing that. And you know what? We always have with the transportation system. But it's worked, worked very well. And that's an investment that we are glad to have made and think that it's yielding great results. This is where I'm shortening. Um, I'm shortening the part I'd like to make longer. So I'm just working through it. But you know, they get return on, we look at the athletic, uh, performance of our kids across the board, right? We continue to. Uh, have a very high engagement rate in athletics, in VPA, visual performing arts, in our clubs and activities. I mean, across the board, we've got kids signing up for lots of things, doing. And we've got students in multiple sports, you know, as they go. And we work hard to, uh, add enough teams where possible. So if we have enough kids, we, years ago, we had lots and lots of interest in soccer. So we had two JV soccer teams instead of one, so that more kids could play, things like that. So at the sub-varsity level, we try to find ways to. Get every student who wants one, an opportunity to participate. Um, varsity, of course, is a little bit different, right? So. We do that. The results have been outstanding. I mean, you know, most recently or recently. Our basketball teams went deep into the playoffs, our hockey team, our, you know, everything else that's gone so well. And of course, our football team won both the Turkey Bowl and the state championship, which. We hadn't done both in a long time. So kind of like, uh, with a team that didn't have necessarily a superstar, that had lots of really good players who were. Just great teammates and played well together. And that's, that's another piece we love. And we also do very well in our individual sports, whether it's golf or, you know, other things. All of those investments that go into our athletics here. And without going into the chart and the details, um, we all, our cost per student. Is amongst the lowest across the, uh, the district reference group as well, across the FCIAC. So we manage those costs very carefully. And actually we've got great partners to thank for that as well. And our all sports booster club is an outstanding partner. And really you talk about public, private partnerships, that's one of them. I mean, they're donating. Half a million or more per year towards our high school athletics. That helps us fund coaches, equipment, other things that really make a difference. Our visual and performing arts, I mean, it's been a, a challenging couple of years for theater programs, right? So this year we're, we're all in and we're back in the bottom picture. I know you can't see it all that clearly, but. It's one of our Saks productions. That's the new stage at Saks. I don't think you can fit another kid up there. And that's just who's in front of the house. And there's a whole nother group in the back of the house. And that's what we're seeing. We're seeing so much interest in our theater program as well. And the kids really wanting to be involved and we're. We're thrilled about that too. You know, after a couple of years and really having to work through some challenges, I think part of it is. We worked through the challenges. We didn't just cancel theater. We figured out a way for the kids to wear clear masks. Nobody could see them and have them practice singing and like, we kept them involved. And now that we're opening it back up. Kids saw that and want to also be involved. And of course our clubs and activities across the board, um, specifically at high school, if a student's interested in something, we make it happen. The, another return on investment is certainly our academic performance for our students, right? So, uh, in our smarter balanced assessment from 22. Without, again, I've got lots of backup slides, not going to put you through them, but you see in, um, this is students grades three through eight. In both our English Language Arts and Mathematics, our students prefer to perform to the top of our reference group. Which also means they performed to the top of the state and really did very, very well. And that's a credit to Dr. Carenti, to our curriculum team, to our staff, to the professional learning we're doing, and of course to our kids. Right? And the work that they put in to make this happen. Um, conversation about sort of longitudinally over time. Again, you see that, um, we were very consistently on an upward trajectory. Certainly, you know, we went a year without testing in 2020. There was, was no testing because of the close in March. In 21, we picked it back up. And in 22, you know, now we're sort of finding our legs with it again with the kids. Still performing very, very well. Uh, not at that 2019 level, but working towards that and. You know, very proud of the results. Externally, we're also, uh, experiencing some recognition certainly for the work that we're doing in the district and, um, both statewide and nationally. Nish, last year we talked about this a little bit. So just to hit a couple of the highlights here, you know, number two across the board here in the state of Connecticut, which is, as you know, one of the. Best school, uh, states in the country as far as public education goes. Um, so look across the board. But I think when you look down, that national recognition is pretty powerful too. Where you talk about, um, number 21 out of 10,751 districts, the 21st best school district in America. It's something really to be proud of. If you keep looking down, eight, number 18 district with the best teachers in America and number 15 best places. and number fifteen best places to teach. There's, obviously, the connection between those two things, right? That speaks to school climate, school culture, teacher retention, and the school communities, you know, the way, the support of the parents in the community. And actually, the number forty-two for student athletes, when you think you're up against all of Texas and California, it's not so bad. And we'll take it. Um, so it's nice to, um, to get the external recognition as well. You know why I like this above like a US News or World Reports, whatever, it's a much more holistic look. Um, and I think it's something to celebrate. And in doing this, um, important to know, sort of what is the investment, right? So we look at this net current expenditures per pupil, right, which is the, um, the state-generated per pupil costs. They look at the, um, the annual audit that's, that districts go through, you know, we have to do it every year, it's normalized across the state. This is on the website and you can get to it, I used to have the address down there, I can get it to you if you're interested. But that's sort of when you talk about per pupil, NCEP, that's, that's what this is. And you see how, um, we are fifty-fourth in the twenty-two, twenty-three ranking, if you look across the board, uh, in our net current expenditures per pupil. Anglic is the adjusted equalized net grand list per capita. Um, and no, I didn't have to look that up, this is how often I've been saying this, right? But the, that's essentially, you know, the, it's the grand list per person, it's, uh, how much could you pay, right? So it sort of goes to your net current, your, what you're paying per pupil and what's your ability to pay. And of course, New Canaan always performs at the top of that, right? And usually it's between one and five from Greenwich, us, Darien, Westport, Weston. Moves around a little bit there. So in this year with twenty-three, twenty-four, we're fourth in our net current expenditures, we were, um, fifty-fourth. So just for some context on that, like, what does it mean? Cause you're only looking at maybe a thousand dollar difference here or there. If we were, um, in Greenwich, and if New Canaan were paying the same per pupil expenditure as a Greenwich public, public schools is paying, it would be over seventeen million dollars higher for our budget, over seventeen million dollars. If we were in Westport, it would be over eight point one million dollars higher. If we were paying what Westport pays per child. And right next door in Darien, if we were to do that, it would be over four point one million dollars higher, our annual budget. So this isn't just a one-year thing either, this would be, you know, each and every year as we've worked through. So just for a little additional context on that, in twenty-eighteen, we were, our net current expenditures per pupil was twenty-seventh in the state. Uh, now we're fifty-fourth. You really, you don't move the needle on this very easily, right? This has been a lot of really hard work.
Can we ask questions during this or are we rating?
I'll take it out of your time at the end, but you're welcome to.
He's fine with me.
We usually, we usually wait, Rita, but is it something that's?
Yeah, I, I'm just curious what everyone else is spending on, those are big numbers that are different. So what are they spending on that we're not? So I'm just curious.
Well, it's actually a great question. And let me lead right into it. Yeah, well, why, one more point to make and then we'll get to it. How about that?
Great.
Okay, I'll show some of the ways that we're saving. It's some decisions that we've made along the lines, you'll see. But twenty-eighteen, we were twenty-seven, now we're fifty-four, right? So we doubled that. And so we look back at the budget trend since twenty-eighteen as well, um, just to get a sense of how we're doing against inflation and found that we have actually trended below inflation since twenty-eighteen. Using an AAGR, right, the average annual growth rate. So it's really just, it's, I said, a little higher than this, this is just literally the number divided by the years instead of compounding a little bit, whatever. Uh, but we found that we've been below inflation since then. Uh, and if we were just adjusting for inflation, the budget proposal this year would be over six hundred and sixty thousand dollars higher for the operating side, not the inflation, not the insurance side. If you add in the insurance side, and just look at insurance, now that trend has been a little bit different in the market, so it's not really fair to use inflation on that. So we use the six and a half, which is an hour, a low end of the average sort of trend around insurance. And we've been trending at the five point nine, so that is about four hundred eleven thousand dollars lower. So we put those two numbers together and we're over a million dollars below inflation and trend in these numbers. And since twenty-eighteen, we've done quite a few things. You know, just start times alone is over a million dollars, that's been additive to the budget. And this isn't this year's budget, this is to the proposal that was forward. And actually is, you know, we've, uh, reduced a little bit as, as Todd was mentioning before. So these numbers would actually be a little bit higher. The, um, school start time costs, the alternative high school that's been, some other decisions that we've made and things that have been additive to the district, all are in here along with, you know, those total numbers. So we've managed this very carefully and we're very proud of it. I've seen about putting it in the presentation twice, but they told me that's a bad idea. So, um, how did we do it? Read it to your question. I mean, and there's lots of moving parts, of course, in a budget, and there's lots of different ways, but we made a strategic decision, uh, years ago, about seventeen, eighteen, sixteen, to really look closely at how we are, what can be in-sourced and to, in order to improve quality and to save some money. So we looked at in-sourcing, we in-source our printing, right? So instead of having huge copiers all over that leads to not waste and excess cost, we have a print shop in the high school uh, that we staff, it used to be staffed by Xerox. And so we canceled the contract with Xerox, we hired our own employee to staff that, we bought the equipment. Uh, and we've been running that. And now I believe, is it over sixty percent of the copies for the district that are running through there? Yeah, over six, sixty percent. So we've been moving that number up every, you know, often. And again, it's about doing things to scale, right? So when you're talking about millions of copies, it makes a difference. The skilled services that we've in-house, so instead of hiring through a, an agency for occupational therapy, physical therapy, other things, BCBA, which are, um, behavior analysts and other things, very expensive per hour costs. We've hired in-house where they can share their expertise with us, uh, train our staff and work directly with our kids and families. Maintenance, we've done the same thing, right? So, um, instead of having to go out of, out of shop for level one kinds of repair, we have on staff multiple electricians, HVAC plumber, carpenter, others that do those level one repairs for us. Again, they're on staff all the time, so it really, it saves us money. Uh, and then something that we, it's easy to take for granted because we've been doing it for a long time, but it really does make a significant difference, both in quality and in cost, is our special electrician. You know, by having our fleet of, um, Suburbans that we have, that we save an awful lot of money. Uh, it's our staff, it's our work, and you know, Roy's a master of making it all happen. But just not too long ago, I was talking to a colleague who has a single student who is, they needed to get transportation for, and it's over a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for a, for one year for one student in one placement, right? So you start to kind of add those up and it gets to a significant, a very high number. Uh, for, we offer better service, I think, doing it in-house, they're our drivers, they know our kids, they know our families, they stay with the students for a long time. And it saves us some money. Other things we've done, and you'll notice these are on the operational side. Right? So we do believe that we want to save everywhere we can and make sense on the operational side in order to protect the instructional core. Keep the money with the kids. So we've done, um, a number of different things across the buildings as well. Like the natural gas is saving us money instead of diesel, though now, you know, it's a little tricky, but it saves us money. We've transitioned our buses to propane, uh, when we last contracted. Um, so our entire bus fleet is running on propane, there's no exhaust, it's quiet, it starts below negative forty degrees, uh, without having to run through the night, things like that, plus less wear and tear on the engines themselves. So because of this and our relationship with DATCO, we renegotiated that contract at two percent a year, where other districts are coming in in double digits when they're doing their, their negotiations. So, um, things like that, long, sort of long-term decisions that are paying off. Uh, the solar that we have at the schools and now actually NCHS, not planning's underway, actually the install's going, is going on right now. So we're putting solar on the high school right now too, should be done in a couple of weeks. Other things with the cogeneration plant over at Saks, we just got that up and running, we're looking at doing another one at the high school once we understand the load around that. And then things like the LED, so we're in the forefront of switching out our lights across the, the whole, all the buildings go to LEDs. Again, it might not seem like much, we have close to a million square foot of space. So when you switch all of those out and move it all over, it's going to save you hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, each and every year. So it's, it's things like that, that we've, uh, we've saved. We also, we're, we're careful. I mean, I, I think that's just a part of it. We've also saved money in our self-insured plan with insurance and the way that we manage that plan. Um, by being self-insured, certainly during the pandemic, um, when utilization was low. And even now that it's, it's equalized, normalized, we've been below, below trend. Uh, districts that are fully insured, the insurance company saving is keeping those earnings, right? That's, that's their profit. For us being self-insured, uh, when we save that money, it comes back to the district and comes back to the taxpayer, that's all part of it. So, to the budget. Couple of different highlights, so I'm just looking at, oh my gosh, highlights. As we built the budget, of course, we're always balancing, balancing excellence and efficiency, right? We're striving to, to keep that balance. We're looking at continuing our investments in several long-term improvement initiatives on behalf of children. Supports the work that we're currently doing. Safety and security is in the forefront all the time, and this, uh, looks to make an improvement there. And then looks really at our kids who need it, need help the most and do it and resourcing for them. So these couple of slides, I'll move through pretty quickly because I know you have them in your book and, uh, part of it is, you know, they, you have to have numbers in a budget presentation, so I'll show a couple of things. But the, you know, you can look across at the historical, going back to twenty-twenty. It's tricky because FY twenty-twenty is the year that we closed in, which is why I used twenty-eighteen earlier, right? Remember, we closed in, in March of twenty-twenty and we're just really fully back in and go back just a year ago. And we were, we didn't have sport seasons like we have now, they were all abbreviated, you didn't have teams traveling like we did, you didn't have the same kind of football season, just different. So now we feel, we're resetting the base in the year that we're in, as all of those act, those activities and things are happening for us. This was the original budget coming in, the Board of Education approved budget. Um, there have been, as Todd mentioned, a couple of changes. Uh, we started with the, the Board of Ed approved a budget of a hundred three million eight forty-six, um, which was the four point eight for year to year. The Board of Finance and our conversation of working with them, and they were great collaborative partners in, in all this, um, we've reduced eight hundred seven thousand, the bulk of that is in the insurance. Um, because of the internal, uh, individual stop-loss, which I won't go into, but I can if you have questions. Uh, which brings us to a four oh two year to year. There's just one other, whoops, one other point to make on it. Um, so this is again, that's the top part of the one chart here, if you take a look. Um, last year, as you may recall, as we were building the FY twenty-three budget, there was a budget reduction of one point three million dollars that, uh, was in discussion and it was really focused on the insurance and thinking maybe we didn't need what's there. And we're coming out of COVID and and there was a lot of uncertainty. So we, uh, we've transferred into the Internal Services Fund, the one point three million out of um, last year's budget to cover that shortfall in this year's budget, right, to make us whole. But what that means is there's a one point three million dollar funding gap going into next year, right? Because we transfer, we don't, we're not going to have that to, to transfer forward again. And part of the reason we had it is we had anticipated a more normal year last year with our sports seasons and other things, and it just didn't pan out that way. You know, if things were abbreviated, things were different. So we, we did save some money there. So it does create a little bit, that one point three million dollar difference in the, in the funding. So just to normalize on that for, um, conversation sake, uh, so if we normalize on, with the reduction, uh, to get to the four oh two, and then the one point three million, you're really looking at a two point seven one increase year to year. Right? So, uh, in, in sort of in spending beyond that, which obviously is well below inflation. If this, you know, a year ago today, inflation's gone up about six percent just in the one year. It's well below our contracts with our employees. Um, so how do we do it? And we keep looking for and finding savings in the operations as much as we can. The, the money, uh, itself, the funding that we're talking about, we look at it by object, and that's how the state statute is written in Connecticut, there are eight objects that your, uh, funds are distributed around. Uh, and you can see, obviously, the two largest are salaries and benefits, right? And then you're talking about eighty-two percent or so in salaries and benefits, you're about sixty-four percent or more actually in salaries and then benefits piece. Purchase services, you've got a couple of big things, our bus contract is almost four million dollars. And as I mentioned, that's trending at two percent, which is a, a great rate, but still it's a big number. And then our out-of-district placements is there as well, and is also, so that's why purchase services is where it's for it is. You look at the others, I mean, you're not looking at very big numbers, those are, those are our big drivers, right? And in any school district, that's really, uh, how it's going out. We also just take a minute to look at it by cost center. And by cost center, so each one of these has someone who's responsible for the spending in that area. So we look across our three elementary schools and see parity there, which is important. Saks and the high school, we see parity there as well. Um, which is important and makes sense. And then the, you know, the high school athletics are carved out, so it's really that academic program. And we also carve out our pupil personnel, PPS, so that's, um, aggregated together. And then you see, you know, again, benefits is district-wide, and you see our, um, our other pieces, transportation, the administration, the, some thin slices. Um, that sort of make up the other pieces to it all. This is, again, we really look at the buildings and, and when the elementary schools build their budget, they do it collaboratively. Uh, and we look at cost per pupil, we look at all kinds of things and data points. Enrollment drives a lot of what we do. So just very briefly to share, this is the NASDAQ, um, enrollment projection that came back from our October one. We have another company right now that's doing, uh, another look for us, because if I look at this, I see one year that kind of jumps out, uh, and that's the twenty-six, twenty-seven year. Um, we say pretty consistent, you see about we're forty-one hundred now, forty-sixty-eight, forty-ninety-five, forty-seventy-nine, but then the jump to forty-two nineteen, that's all in kindergarten. Uh, and what they're saying, seeing there is the kids that were born in twenty-twenty-one are significantly higher than, than years past. And so they, um, those are known births.
Too much working at home.
That's right. So as a result, we're looking at a kindergarten class that's jumping up about a hundred twenty-five kids that year. Uh, and then the projections have them continuing to trend upward, both in migration and births. Now, anything, of course, more than five years out is a hypothetical projection based on data. But that one year, that twenty-six, twenty-seven, those are known births. Um, there's still a factor that they apply, but there are, you know, there's the highest number of known births that we, that we've seen in a long time. So the other group is doing a deep dive, looking at everything for us, they're going to come back another probably month, we'll get a sense of, um, do they see the same kind of trend? Do they see something different? And based on their feedback, we'll be meeting and talking and coming before the town council, Board of Finance and others to share what we're thinking is the best approach. But, um, to be blunt, I mean, if the numbers hold up, our elementary schools can't handle.
How accurate has this been in the past? Is this pretty accurate when, when this has been projected out? Has it been pretty accurate in the past?
Kindergarten is the toughest to predict, as you can imagine.
Yeah.
The, they have been pretty, uh, except there's been one year where they were off by about forty kids, but they were low about that forty kids. Uh, beyond that, they're usually plus and minus ten, fifteen kids, they've been pretty tight across the board in the K-12. Yeah. So, but the further out you go, the more variability there is. So, yeah, they gave us a ten-year projection, but if I look back at last year's ten-year projection, it looks different. Yeah, but they didn't have the known births from twenty-twenty-one, right? So that's where the other group that they're going a little deeper, they're looking at housing starts, they're looking at some other data points where that NASDAQ doesn't use. Because they, they don't want to look at something that might not come to fruition and build it into the numbers. Uh, so they wait until their actual numbers when they do their calculation. But the group that's doing, the other group that's doing it for us has been in touch with, you know, with zoning, with, with the agency and others to get the information, uh, is all part of their study. So we'll see how it comes out.
Can you tell which, uh, where the students are by school?
They, we will be with this other analysis, yes. Yeah, because that may be that we have to look at, um, where students are attending as well.
Cause East has the highest number, so, yeah, it would be interesting to see.
Yeah, they'll, they do it literally street by street. You know, they ask for maps and, and zoning and those pieces, so they'll look at all of that. What our chat, you know, it's, it all depends. So I don't, you know, we can't go cart before the horse. Our buildings are pretty landlocked, you know, when you look at east, look at south, look at west, you know, so we're, um, we'll see what comes and then we're going to have to do some deep thinking and what's, what's the right approach. So, but the enrollment is what drives our staffing, obviously, we have our guidelines that manage all of that. So our, um, staffing proposal in the, uh, in the budget before you, we have a, a couple of additions that, uh, are many times iterative in what we're doing and some are very small, but they're here because it all has to tie out in the end. A point one, so one point O FTE is a full-time person. Um, so point one strings it's out, point one English to high school, that's taking people who are fractional FTEs now and just moving them up a little bit. You would never hire, you know, a point one English teacher, at least it'd be hard to find. The, in special education, we're looking at continue, going into phase two of our literacy academy. And we talked about this last year at, um, at some length. We started it this year, we, it, we're having great success with it and with the children that are assigned into it. Um, so we're, we are looking to expand upon that. Bill and his team presented to the Board of Ed a couple of weeks back to share an update on what's happening. And he just told me today that he has a new set of data that's even more impressive with the students and, and how they're progressing. So if you're just, uh, So if you're just a quick recollection, it's the K two, it can go up to four students who are really struggling readers. They are um receiving special education services, and this is an intensive reading program using the science of reading and and or called Orton Gillingham is the the program, but very specifically, very scripted and very highly successful. So it's working very well with kids. The there's a one point O position for we're calling a classroom coach. And the idea there, it's again for the element, the three elementary schools, the principals came forward with this idea back in October, November, and we've been talking about it since. It's likely to be someone on staff already, and then that person would be backfilled with a new teacher who uh who knows um who is sort of a master teacher at establishing the classroom environment that helps all kids to to be successful, to um help to help teachers develop the skills that they might need when students become dysregulated to approach that in the right ways in order to um re-regulate the child and get them get them back into learning. The person would likely work with kids at times. Really, those are spending a lot of time coaching adults as well, so like model teaching, helping folks, whether they're brand new teachers into the district or some that are just just have some challenges. We've seen some challenges um this year that a little more intense than we've seen in some past years, and we think that uh this is a kind of position, I don't expect that we'll have it forever. But I think that we need it and in order to help out, and that's where we we have some incredible expertise in 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 the district. And so identifying the right person who's ready for this next challenge gives them an opportunity to work as a coach with their colleagues. The principals asked, you know, with the the first request was for three, one for each building. And we said, let's let's start with one, share it across the three, let's get the model in place and then we'll talk and see where we are. But I do think it's the right the right place to be focusing, because if students aren't ready to learn, the rest isn't isn't going to be effective and uh we also, I mean, we've had the good fortune of having hired brilliant teachers, you know, across board. But to be fair, any teacher who's gone through the preparation program in the last couple of years has had a very different experience, you know, what you really can't learn to student teach through Zoom. That of the days are, it just has been very different, many, most school districts weren't like ours, where we didn't close, as you know, we didn't have any unanticipated closures. There's a very small handful of schools region statewide that can say the same thing, right? So um if you're student teaching and you're closing every time someone has a positive case to quarantine the whole school, all this, it's just different. So this classroom coach would also have an opportunity to work with with our new staff and help to onboard them too. So I'm glad to answer questions about that, but I think it's a good move. The math specialist over at Saks, similarly, you know, we're we have two. And part of what's happening is sometimes we have some long term leaves that we don't expect, and then the math specialist is the one to go in and teach those courses and we lose that person. But also, we we need to um add more support for our new teachers and to work with kids. These specialists work with students a lot. So it gives them uh another position, it would be fifty percent in the budget and fifty percent in the grant funded to do this, and you know, it is a school of over thirteen hundred students typically, so it's a very large school. So to have three math specialists at that level is certainly in line. Uh and then the last thing, we call it enrollment variability adjustments. Other districts call it budget protection or other things like that. But that's, to get to that number, we look at our uh projections, we do ask them to do it by school. They're they're accurate-ish, you know, they're not, you can't really bank on it too much, but they do it, they do a fair job. The group that's doing it now will do a better one. But we look at to see how many of the sections are at or near the breaking point to need a new section. And we know, but we know there's also going to be variability, so you don't want to lock that in to say this is going to happen over at East, but it's not going to happen at West when it could actually be the opposite. So we put in these enrollment variability adjustments for those sort of those unknowns that are close. And you'll you might recall, I mean, we've gone negative on this from time to time, depending upon where the numbers fall. This year, they tend to be falling a little bit on the high side. And it's still, we're next year will not be a year to run classes over last guidelines, I mean, we try never to. And we usually target the eighteen to twenty. This year, we're really, we've gone to seventeen instead to try to bring the numbers down just a little for our elementary kids. And you can see, you see a focus in elementary, right? You see that we are really putting some resources there with our youngest students with the literacy academy to coach these things because of the disruption that they've experienced, and we want to make sure that we can get them back on track. This is the kind of thing, if we don't need it, then we don't um plan to use it, right? And that's the funds that would be turned back if we don't, if we don't need the position. Uh and then there's one non-certified position, which is our campus monitor. Couple of other things in the budget, they may look like small numbers, but they've all been very carefully scrutinized. The some other investments, you may have, I've heard that basketball is going to a shot clock next year, right? So I used to coach girls' basketball, I wish I had a shot. So glad to do that. We're going to be administering the PSATs next year, investment cybersecurity. And you see the two percent in transportation is, you can imagine if that was a six, eight, ten, twelve percent, which our neighbors and and some of my colleagues are getting in their transportation contract, a very different number. And you see a couple of other investments there, and then, of course, we've got some savings, right? Some opportunities that we've taken to bring the numbers down. And you can see those here, again, the transition to propane, we couldn't get natural gas out to West, but we are even the propane, that'll save us some money, some other things like that. So that's the operating budget, and again, our focus really is controlling those operational costs so that we can continue to invest in the kids in the classroom and the student experience. Students don't care what we take for our electricity or how we heat the building, they just care that it's warm. So it's up to us to find the right way to do it in order to keep the resources where we we get the best bang for our buck. We want to invest in our children. And you see, and I mentioned, you know, we are looking at the our youngest learners here uh in in lots of ways, but we're not forgetting our middle and high schoolers either. Bill Egan's listening, so I had to say that. But it's all, you know, all part of the the complex system that we have, and we are, I'm I'm so proud of my team, proud of our the Board of Education and all of us working together and to bring this forward to to you tonight. So that's our operating, and you know, we have capital too, but I'm glad to take any questions if you have around the operating.
Yeah, we'll take a break and take some operating questions, anybody, Tom, Tom Butterworth, can you can you get them back on the screen there? Tom is the uh is our, Tom and Rita are our liaison, so I want to make sure that Tom, we can see Tom if he has any questions there.
I can probably, do you want me to stop sharing?
Yeah, if you have a second.
There you go.
I don't, and by the way, we uh share that privilege with Rita as a joint liaison, but um been following this and extremely impressed with what the schools have accomplished, what Dr. Lutzy and the staff. It's it's just unbelievable.
Thank you, Tom. Rita, anything?
Yeah, I have nothing to add, I echo with what Tom said, and I like how you've laid out not just the expenses, but how you've also tried to reduce them. I still have a question that we can talk about later about that seventeen million dollar difference, but I I love how you've laid this out so that you're showing you're showing both sides of the equation.
Any else, Maria?
Just one question on the staffing. You said the classroom coach, it sounds like they're more seasoned teachers. Is that amount high enough, like, would you expect that you would bring a teacher in at that? I would think it would be higher.
Well, so what we would do is that is probably someone on staff, and you're right, somebody who's got that experience and that we know would be living this role. That's the cost to backfill that person.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
So we use, and that's the number that we've been able to use for on a special ed department, it's seven hundred dollars for.
Doctor Lutzy have a a few questions. So first off, the workers comp, the premium's five hundred thirty eight thousand dollars, that's the the yearly premium. So what's, tell me about how that you're arriving at that, has it been shopped out? Is there any ability to shop around, I mean, or are we just accepting what's coming in from the town? Tell me the process, I want to understand the process.
I mean, as far as processing the town and what we're then use Karma. And if you don't have a a number yet, let's uh assuming a three percent of this.
Right, has there been any 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 effort to, you know, have some other alternate um analysis done, any consultant come in, any type of proposals for any way to find savings, and that may be more for the town to answer than maybe the Board of Ed if you're doing it together, but.
Sure, Karma does cover um cover most of the municipalities and events, and we can certainly look at it. I know that we traditionally, we've done it together for a long time.
Yeah.
The we've actually, I've sat in on one or two of the meetings, I don't know if you were able, if you went to the one this year. So they'll come and we'll meet together and and run through all, you know, what's there, but certainly can take a look and see, ask around and see if anyone's not using Karma or if there's another um option out there. But you're right, it would be us and the town together.
Right, okay.
I think we get a better rate by going.
Oh, certainly. I know that there was a question I asked last year, so I just want to make sure that maybe since you're new to the role, perhaps you could take a look at that. So the special ed salaries are up a half a million dollars. Is that enough to attract talent? I know it's extremely difficult, so I'm wondering, um you know, I know these numbers are razor close to where they need to be, but that's a really important area, and I want to make sure that there's enough in the budget. So you think that's a fair number? I know it's tough out there getting great talent.
It's tough, you know, but we are, we're bound by contract too.
Yeah.
So um, you know, we work, when we're we're bringing in teachers that are in a shortage area, I can work with the unions sometimes and sort of move up a little bit here and there to to attract them in, but uh we've got a pretty stable staff. So a lot of that is predictable cost as we go. Yeah, I think we've scrutinized it pretty closely, we should.
Do you anticipate an expansion of a headcount for, you know, more more staff and and will that be enough for that?
Yeah, well, we've got the literacy academy, right? So we're adding to the literacy academy there. Beyond that, uh I think Bill has been doing a good job really managing his staff close, Bill Tesper behind me. Right, so I think that we, I think we're comfortable with the number.
Okay. On the special ed settlements, so I saw that there were two point one million dollars in settlements, was that for the last fiscal year?
That is um current.
That's current, is I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Let me just go into it, I don't want to
Okay. I'm sorry, what's that one for coming up? What's it? Is what's expected?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say.
And as you just, for what it's worth, the context, so as you know, in our added district costs, we budget gross. So we take what we expect to be the real actual cost, and that's what we build into our budget where all the other districts that I know of budget net of the um excess cost grant reimbursement. So we get a little over a million dollars back in that annually. So if we were net, and I'm just saying because people like to compare this number, right?
Right.
So I know all the other districts in our region, just they do it net in their budget as they build their budget, so they're going to look lower. And for us, if we were to go net, it would be a million dollars less than the budget. But then we don't have protection if something were to change, so we agreed together years ago with the town we should budget gross in the Board of Ed, and then the town takes the excess cost grant reimbursement as a revenue.
Right.
And then if something happens, uh we're able to access that to make us whole if something happens in this one individual line.
How is that trending, that number over the past, say, five years? And then how is that in relation to other towns, if if you're aware of that information?
So tuitions themselves have been trending, I believe, about five percent a year. So if nothing else were to change, it would be five percent a year. Bill and his team looks very, you know, very carefully, who do we have, who's aging out, what do we anticipate coming in? The in truth, it's um it's a it's a challenge.
Yeah. Um so there are three assistant principals at Saks, are there also three at the high school?
There are.
Can you just tell me what exactly the assistant principals do? And like, and again, I'm not challenging. Sorry, but yeah, no, there's there's a couple of questions, but briefly, and again, it's not, there's no judgment that I'm questioning here, but I'm just, I just need to understand what do they do?
Sure, so at Saks, we've got a fifth grade assistant principal and then a seventh and eighth, seventh and eighth loop with their kids over the two years, the fifth stays there, and the principal does what he can to pick up the sixth grade along with the dean of students that we have. So they are, and I'll be super quick, but you know, this is something we've talked about for a long time. They are, they get to know their kids, they're involved very directly with student life. They evaluate teachers, each of them has probably twenty five to thirty plus teachers that they evaluate using our teacher evaluation document and process, which results in anywhere from nineteen to twenty four different meetings and touchpoints, whatever, with each of those people throughout the course of the year, because they're doing formal observations, they're setting goals, they're reviewing the goals. So they are our frontline with the staff and teacher quality and that work. They're also often the ones who are contacting parents directly, working with parents at the middle school, they also are parts of the teams in the grade levels that they are. So they're attending team meetings, they're working with counselors and and support groups. They're also um part of student support teams, SSTs, that meet to talk about students and maybe if anyone's having challenges or what's happening, so that's where some names maybe surface. They work directly around school security and assistant principal represents every one of our five buildings on the crisis advisory board. And they're there in decision making and advising and helping out with with that work. At the high school, um there's more supervision that goes on with kids, certainly, as you've got um more freedom. So with more freedom, we need the assistant principals to be involved with that. They also supervise different departments where it's grade level of the elementary. Each assistant principal is assigned a grade at the high school as well. But then like um you might pick up the English department or the social studies department, math department for the evaluations and then go to those department meetings, be a part and an instructional leader with them, you know, as well through that. They're also, you know, at events and doing supervision there. Um and really, having been an assistant principal at both in a a middle school and a and a high school, you're really the um you're on the ground person, right? You're just kind of, it's your job to be where the kids are and to be a part of that and be a part of school climate and the culture and what's going on to have have those relationships with staff in order to be the communication liaison and to really support the principal and the district administration and others in whatever's, whatever initiatives may be happening. So that's just off the top of my head, but.
That was great, I appreciate that.
They are key folks, and we've got one assistant principal in each of our elementaries, a principal and an assistant, as you know, for each.
Yeah, sure.
There's about five hundred kids in our elementaries, so.
Right, a couple of quick other questions, I want to look at the athletic department for a second. Definitely great job in renegotiating the bus uh contract, that's phenomenal, given what's out there, and I represent a lot of bus companies, so that's a heck of a great job on that. The question I have, though, with the athletic department is that there's a lot of charter bus usage. So can you just briefly talk about, like, is there anything on the horizon that will eventually reduce that or we're just stuck because of shortage? I mean.
We're trying, yeah, and I've got to give Jay again all the credit in the world, he's been as creative as anyone can be in trying to solve this problem. It is shortage, it's shortage of drivers, uh it's shortage of uh interest in doing those runs at the end of the day, and it's also larger bus shortages so that there are drivers that maybe would have done the extra runs for us, now are picking up work elsewhere for more money than doing those things. And so it really is a response to not being able to to find folks to drive the bus. You know, we're working with our part with Daco, who's been our good partner for a long time, and they're working hard to do their part and trying to help. But the end of the day, we want to make sure our kids can get to where they need to go. I think it's, you'd see charter buses have become the solution of the day, throughout the region.
Yeah.
You know, when you've got um golf teams, tennis teams showing up and luxury coaches, uh you know, you're not the only one, you know, who's trying to solve this problem. But Jay's Jay's been very creative in trying to figure out.
I appreciate that, so on that point with the coaches, I I want to understand the coaches and they get stipends, like it's like a like a history teacher would say is an assistant football coach, you just tell me how the salary war, the stipend works for that?
Yeah, and actually, on the buses, one other thing that we're exploring is uh last year, you may recall, we purchased two type two buses as a district. So now we're looking to see who can we get to drive, you know, on our staff, who can we get the the licensure to drive and be able, and they're type two, so it's sixteen or so seats. But it worked great for golf team or maybe swim team or other, so we're trying to solve the problem in-house too. For what it's worth. The um the question was.
Coaches, the stipends, how is that determined?
So it's all in the it's contract, right? So it's in negotiations with the teachers association.
It is, okay.
And they're all different levels, one through nine. Uh and so and in Connecticut, it's not um part of your TRB, it's not retirement, whatever, I know in New York, I think it is. So it's all done in teacher negotiations, it's the uh and not, it's the amount, and then it's the positions and which amount they receive, so it's all part of the.
Ah, okay, the last question I have goes to cybersecurity. I know that's a big line item that there's a three year is up now, we're paying some more, and there's cameras we're going to be installing. One of the questions I had asked Bill Parrot of the Audit Committee when he came before us last a few weeks ago was if he, there were any ability to what types of areas he thought saw that potentially could be some cost savings, and he thought that a one cybersecurity person for the town and the Board of Ed uh would make sense. Are you opposed to that? Have you considered it? Will you consider that?
Well, you know, you're going to think I'm being um I'm contradicting myself, this may be an area that we want to look um outside because the demands on cybersecurity are so great, right? So we have, that's a hardware cost that you see here. We've been exploring different. Um, we've been exploring different possible ways to approach this. Um, because you'd much rather have a team of people who may be doing cybersecurity for us and a few other versus one individual, you know, who, who's trying to do all that. So we're looking at different configurations and structures and what this may look like. Uh, and plan to have a conversation with, with the first selectman pretty soon about it all. Um, certainly, you know, it's, it's something that we think about all the time. You always hear about municipalities or districts, uh, getting hacked and the most recent was, they used to say if you don't pay them, they're going to delete all your data. What I just heard most recently was they're telling the, uh, board of ed, if you don't pay them, they're going to release all their data, all their, their student data.
Alright, thank you.
And, uh, yeah.
That's horrible.
Yeah. So we are very well aware of all this. We've got what I think is a very effective strategy, uh, sort of three-pronged approach to, to managing all of that. But we've been looking at some external partners that might be up.
Thank you.
That's my great question. Uh, anybody else? Brian, before we go into capital. And I know, uh, and Rita and Tom can, um, answer this question, but we, between the board of finance and the council, there were hundreds of questions I went in and, you know, you, you were busy answering all of them. So I know everybody had a chance to see all those Q and A, so. Um, and we'll have another chance to ask Brian's questions, uh, next week, so.
I have one more. The literacy academy, do you foresee that, um, since you're meeting kids' needs earlier with the Orin Gillingham, will you see that translate later on to maybe less students or students not ending up in special ed? Or reading or?
I, I think we'll see several positive outcomes over time. I do, I do think that certainly will be, could be one of them.
Hmm.
I think that, um, the addition replacement that we talked about could be another one. Um, and while they still may be in special education, some services, uh, I think that we, the expectation is we'll see the improvement, um, as they move through and really, you know, change the course of their experience. So whether it brings down our total numbers or just the intensity of the need, then we'll see.
And phase two means, is it the second year or, okay?
Yep. It's the second year. So our, and then there'll be a phase three, and we're really looking to build across all three elementaries. So that there's, as you know, we have the good fortune of, uh, somebody on staff who's a fellow in this, um, program, which is, there's under a hundred in the country. Um, so she's been working with us for some time and it's gone through the training and now she's training everyone up to an associate's level and she's training our general and staff across the board in the elementaries and then really focusing on the special and staff who are in the academy. So it's not only helping the students that are in the academy, but it's really um, improving reading instruction across the board.
It'll be interesting to see overall, like, what it does to scores, because reading is
Absolutely.
everything.
That's right. Well, as, as you know, right, the, uh, up till it's kindergarten to gra- grade three, we teach students how to read. Right? They're learning to read and then after third grade, they're reading to learn. And if you missed that part, you know, you, we've got to really set that third grade mark, so, um, it's so to be very proud of it. I think we're really on the right track.
Great, thanks, Mark. All right, capital.
All right. As usual, I've left a minute and a half for capital.
Sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Hillary. Hi, thank you, Dr. Letzey. Um, just a very quick question. Do you have a, a legal budget or is that subsumed somewhere in one of the line items?
We do have a legal budget. Uh, it is in special education.
It's, okay, so that's under item nine?
Yeah, yeah, it's on page sixty-nine.
Okay.
And, uh, that is, it is flat year to year at a hundred and three thousand.
Okay. And is that?
And then there's some in negotiations and some in HR.
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Yep, we also have some in human resources.
Okay.
The bulk of it is in, uh, special ed.
I see. Okay, I see that here. Um, and have you seen any, any increases, um, in human resources or anything beyond special ed in the last year or so?
Well, you know, we've been caught, but like many districts, we've been caught in a cycle of negotiations. Uh, really started back with the Affordable Care Act where, um, we didn't know what was going to happen with the ACA taxes. And we got into a one-year cycle with many of our folks and then with the, of course, the pandemic and the challenges with that. So we are, we're now working to get back on a regular cycle of our negotiations with our staff. The, the certified staff has stayed because they're all by statute and it's three years and you have to do that, but it's really our, our non-certified staff. So we've had a little bit of an increase uh, because we've been more in, we've been in more negotiations, but I think we're normalizing that. I know we are normalizing it in the next couple of years. Beyond that, um, you know, there's a little fluctuation here and there, but it's relatively consistent for us.
Thank you.
And I do have one more question, sorry.
Rita.
And it just occurred to me, because I'd have, having these conversations with, um, and I didn't get a chance to ask this question, but it's in reference to guidance counselors. Um, you know, getting into colleges these days, it's just stressful. It's become more complex. Um, obviously, the better schools, you, the, you know, these kids get into the better kind of the reputation of New Canaan. So I'm wondering, um, a lot of pri- uh, private schools, their guidance counselors are pretty, um, I don't say top-notch, but that, you know, they're, they're expected to provide a certain service. And I know that typically the reputation for public schools, that the guidance counselor are kind of pushing papers, not necessarily guiding. Um, and I'm just wondering, you know, how much attention do we put in that department and how are we hiring for that and training for that? Because I think it's really, you know, it's a, it's on a lot of parents' minds right now.
Sure, sure. And with two students in college, two children in college, I understand. Um, so I would guess maybe nine years ago, maybe ten years ago, um, the school counseling, uh, department did a presentation to the board of education about the services, things they were providing, the board of ed, after hearing the presentation, made an investment in the counseling staff of the high school by adding two counselors and by investing in their travel so that they could actually go out and, and visit schools. Uh, of course, the last couple of years, we haven't been able to do much of that, but now they're back in the swing of things and visiting schools, uh, very strategically, looking at their, our students' applications, looking at where they've applied and schools that they thought more of our students should have gotten in than did. They'll then go visit that school, talk to the admissions officer, talk about our districts, talk about the things that we're doing and, you know, what, what makes New Canaan special. Um, they, we have adopted some things from private schools, to be frank. I mean, the, they do a blind, uh, blind read of every nation. So they'll get this, their, uh, students' applications, take off the names, hand them around, folks will read them, give feedback on them and, uh, and they'll work together sort of to develop an understanding of the essays that are being written and things like that. Um, all of that being said, we are planning to have another presentation with the board of education relatively soon. Uh, I think our counselors do a fabulous job, but you're right, it's something that we want to always pay attention to. Uh, at the end of the day, it's the colleges that are going to make those decisions, right? The counselors can only do so much. Uh, and it's whether or not that student is bringing to them what they're looking for. Um, so it's, it's a very hard process, but yes, we are continuing to focus on it. We're going to be doing that, uh, doing a presentation in the board, with the board of education.
Yeah, and I agree. It's not necessarily just getting into the, the, the top schools. It's getting them into the right schools. That's right for the child and guiding them in that direction. I mean, it's a, it's actually a process that people start in, in ninth grade, not in, not as a junior.
Yep, you know, and what account, one of our counselors who retired recently a couple of years ago, um, sort of described herself as the destroyer of dreams.
Yeah.
Because in that me, first meeting with the, the child and the parents, she would have to tell them, you know, tell them the truth. And, uh, and that's, that is important. And that's where the relationships come in and the, and the research and the work that we've done. Um, it's, it's a very tough, emotionally charged field. Uh, but we do focus on it. I think our counselors do, do a fine job.
Right.
Is there, um, I don't know what quantifier I should put in this, um, emphasis or not emphasis, but, uh, enough knowledge about technical schools and that path, um, as opposed to four-year college educations. There's a good deal being discussed about that, you know, um, out and about.
Yep. Um, yes, if there's enough.
Mm-hmm.
I think that students, um, that see that as their path are well-supported. I do think that we're in an environment where if the student doesn't bring it forward, there could be some hesitation uh, for for us to. And I think it's something to work on. Yeah, I, um, we do have students that go to community college. I mean, it's one of our actually happiest enrolled each year, you know, students that go. Uh, we have a great CTE program, career in technology education. Um, we've got the engineering program that runs through. We still run car care. We still do woodshop. We still do um, some of those, you know, more traditional things for kids where if that's their intelligence and that's their strength. Um, so we do offer the opportunity for students to, uh, to be exposed to those kinds of things, uh, which I think is very helpful for students who, that's their strength. The Yeah, so I guess, you know, I, I can only go back to my experience. I, it's a question that I haven't asked, so I don't want to, um, guess too much. Um, I think we're probably doing a better job today than we were ten years ago when I was there. Uh, in really helping the students to identify what their strengths are and helping them to be individually, um, to understand their path may, is different than others. Um, but it's something I'll look into a little bit more.
They have the opportunity and.
Tom Butterworth and Christina Ross.
Eighth grade. Yeah, they have that opportunity to go to AITE or, you know, if they're interested in something like that, there are the schools locally that they can go to to kind of take different paths.
Well, and the maker labs, I think, does also bring out whether they'd be interested in those things like the
Right.
woodshop and the, it's, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, guys, reminder, we got, uh, time constraints here. So Tom and then Christina and then capital. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, real quick, uh, the discussion of guidance counselors prompted, uh, a question. Um, when we've talked about the degrees of learning deficit from COVID, uh, to the extent that there that existed, uh, we, we see that in some of the numbers about, you know, we're not having as quiet as high, we're not having the eighty-nine percent proficiency, you know, three through eight or whatever, but, um, we've not talked about whether any deficits really affected, uh, the, the higher achievers in particular, you know, uh, college applications. Um, you know, did, uh, are, are, are our kids just doing superbly compared to other high schools a- as is, or did we see a little drop-off, um, because of COVID even, even in that situation?
Yeah, so it's, um, do we evaluate ourselves like we're playing golf or like we're playing basketball, right? Um, we, we look at our performance against our performance and we want to see that upward trend. When we go broader than that, our students continue to, um, outperform in just about every, every way you can, you can measure. I mean, we just, last week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we had visitors from the tri-state consortium. We do this every three years. It's a visit with seventeen volunteers who came in and really looked at our schools and looked at our school cultures, climate and, and systems we have and whatever. And to a person, they said, nobody's doing this. You know, the things that you're doing in your district don't exist anywhere else. Um, and that, that felt good and that was a testament to the folks behind me, the folks on Zoom, other folks throughout the district. So when we, you know, this is, this is a part of just who we are, right? We always want to continuously improve based on, uh, performance year after year, based on our own results. Um, but when we look broader, there's, um, a lot to be proud of.
Thanks, Brian.
Christina.
Hi, Dr. Letzey. I want to thank you for the presentation. It's been very informative. And in follow-up to Rita's comments and questions regarding guidance counselor, I was wondering how, um, we have changed or improved the honors and AP classes. Are they open to more students?
Yes, over time, the focus has been to open them up, uh, to more students. And what we do is, uh, again, if somebody is not recommended for honors, then they make an appointment with their counselor and then with the department chair and have a conversation about, uh, maybe why they weren't recommended and what the expectations might be. Uh, we do that, um, not to keep anybody out, but so that it's an honest conversation about uh, what they're bringing to the table. And then they're also make, forming that relationship with the department chair and making a commitment to saying, this is important to, you know, if the student says this is important to me, here's why and here's what I'm willing to do, because it's also the department chair could loop in if there are challenges. So, um, yes, we have. It used to be, um, much more difficult than it is today.
As, as you well know, uh, college admissions leans heavily on how many honors and AP classes a student has taken. And the higher you go in the quality of school, the more that they demand to see that. And that may be a reason why are students being disqualified. There are many schools that have open enrollment for honors and AP. And a while back, we spoke about it. And I wonder if you can come up with some numbers of what it would take financially to make those courses available to any student that wants to take it.
Sure, I can, I can talk to the department chairs and see, and it may be interesting to see how many, um, want to versus how many are, right? Because we may find that those numbers are very, very similar. So yeah, I'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Christina. Robin, your hands up? Hey, Robin, you have a question?
At least she's smiling. Either that or she's faking it. That'd be funny. I'm frozen.
All right, so let's, let's go on to capital and we'll get Robin back.
All right, so, um, capital. So, again, I'll go very, very quickly. Glad to take questions during or at the end, whenever you prefer, Steve. The, uh, our capital budget is made up of three parts, right? First is our facilities capital. Uh, you've got all this in your budget book. I'm not going to go, you know, go line by line. I'll just hit one or two highlights as we go through. Um, we are looking at a school facilities assessment. It's been eight, nine years since we've done that. And so as you, if you look at our ten-year plan, it's, gets a lot thinner, you know, as you look out. So it's time to redo that. Uh, we've gotten a lot of things done when you really look across between the, the roofs, the other things that we've done. So we're excited to bring them in and see kind of what's, what's next. And so we can keep taking good care of our, of our buildings and be good stewards of the space that the, the district has given us. Um, included in that is an HVAC assessment. In Hartford right now, uh, there's legislation that requires us to do an HVAC assessment. So that's a pretty big number as well. So as part of that hundred is both the facilities assessment and the mandatory mandated HVAC assessment, since they're going to be onsite, it makes sense. We're capturing some efficiencies there. Some safety things around fire alarm panels, um, refurbishing gym floor over at South. I guess the, um, the big thing to talk about briefly is the boilers. Last year, we talked about replacing the boilers in all three elementary schools and the uh, town boards all supported it and we went forward with our, our bids, uh, or to get the bids in and they came in significantly higher than we had thought. Of course, it's, you know, there, there are different versions. We were looking at, um, older model cast iron boilers and now it's shifted to the, uh, condensing boilers, which are much more efficient do a much better job, run quieter, run cleaner, run a natural gas. Uh, will save us money in the long term, but there's enough charge there, plus just getting materials and supplies as as Todd mentioned before, it's been a challenging environment. So what we were able to do in working with the hand in the town, we made a transfer over out of, um, I think South in order to fully fund East. So we were able to get East done. They were the ones that needed it the most. And now what we need to do, what we're asking is to fund up where we need to be for the South boiler and for the West boiler. Oh, we transferred out of West, I apologize. Um, so that we can complete both of those projects, have all three elementary schools on new boilers. It is time to do that. I mean, these are limping. We do have some redundancy, but when one goes down, we're just praying the other one doesn't and nursing this one back to health and it's, um, it's time. So we're, it will save money in the long run, but there's, uh, the upfront investment there on those. Uh, we've made some adjustments, uh, after a conversation with the board of finance, given the challenges of the environment and what have you. So you'll see the line through the renovate parking over at Saks. That's also because we do have a balance that we can carry forward on last year's paving. And you'll see it in next year's budget, we'll be doing more, but in conversation with Tiger, um, there's funding to get that work done. So it's not that we're not doing the work. We're going to be using existing funding that was approved in this year. We'll use that in this upcoming summer and then we'll request new money to use in the next summer. So, does that make sense?
I, so I just want to make sure, because I have to say I walk by there every single day for Saks and it looks, no offense, terrible, that whole parking lot to be like the number one school niche one year and then to walk on the campus in the back, I, yeah, I was, when I saw that line crossed out, I was very disappointed, but you're saying that it's going to do it. So that's great. That's good to hear. That's good to hear.
It is. It is. And, uh, you know, what we do and we, Tiger is great at this. He'll capitalize on when someone's coming to town to do other places, so he's able to save some money.
That's good.
Gets them over there, gets this done and
Right.
um, it's a win-win. Certainly for me. Um, let's see. Again, just moving through. So a couple of things at the high school with the planetarium, we began at, at, we built the budget back in December. We were two hundred thousand dollars short because of the amazing work of our fundraising team. Now, if they, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars to get across the finish line with them. As you'll recall, um, last year, the town funded three hundred fifty thousand. The fundraising team has now matched that, uh, three hundred fifty thousand of private donations and others. And so this And others. And so this hundred fifty finishes the. The project and allows us to go ahead and implement or initiate phase three. We broke it into phases with the longest lead time first, so that we could really work hard to try to get this open to start the school year in twenty three. And I have a couple of slides on that in there that you'll see, but we can move through them. Again, we're deferring some things as you see. Yeah, we have three gym floors in here. We said, which one? Let's rank them. We did. We see the auxiliary gym at the high school. It really does need it. But again, we're trying to figure out, you know, make the best decisions as we as we do all of this.
Did the original budget and I. Capture what we're looking to accomplish here. We're highlighting that we were able to raise additional funds and match and so forth. But the original budget, was it not to accomplish this?
So the original budget request for the planetarium?
Yes.
Yep, I came, it was always meant to be a public private partnership. We, the request was for five fifty. And then the private group is going to fundraise the rest. The five fifty was reduced, was brought down to three fifty. And the the group went to went to work and they were able to fundraise the 350,000. We need about the eight fifty to completely do the project. So it was that was never intended to cover all of it. It was always meant to be partially privately fundraised and partially town funded.
Okay, so the original price was reduced. I'm just trying to be clear.
Yep.
And then now we're going back to the original request. I just want to be clear because if the original request is a certain number and the budget is 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 finite or listen budgets always change. Typically usually go higher. If if it was reduced and now we're going back to the well saying, hey, we need more. You know, if these budgets are, you know, very finite in terms of what's needed to complete the project. And maybe it should be just more socially discussed as. Let's not chop it back or move it back. Maybe it should be to the original request and holding people accountable to to that number.
So the, I think, one of the reasons why it was it was reduced last year in this in the conversation. Was because there was not a. There wasn't a fundraising team in place. There wasn't, but we knew the number and we knew what we had to do, but we didn't have that. That committee structure going.
I'm not holding you to this exact. Okay, we're socializing, having a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. And so I think that in real in very good faith, that committee formed. Spent the last year really fundraising in a difficult fundraising environment, as many folks know. And we're able to hit that three fifty. So to hit that match. The the price did go up from what we expected it to be. Because of the scope of the project, we had to include the labor costs, right? So the labor was in there, but it became, what is the term? When it's set by the state, the labor costs.
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage. Thank you, thank you. So we didn't, it wasn't built with prevailing wage, but it has to be because of the size. So that added a significant amount as well. I feel very good about the work that the fundraising committee has done. And I think fundraising $350,000 the way that they had and. Really, under a year is is very impressive. Now, and we come forward with this request. Because we, I believe, it's really the way that we get this in place as quickly as possible now on behalf of our case.
Does this get it done is the question?
This will get it done. Thanks to the fundraising that was completed.
And the additional money requested.
The fight, yep. So it's the three fifty.
I'm gonna keep handling the fundraising that was in a difficult market, but it's also we're going back to taking another bite of the apple. Say we need more money to complete it.
That's right. We're at about 700 and we need eight fifty and then 150 will get us there.
Can I ask a question? About the HVAC assessment, you said that's a new. A new requirement to. I'm just curious if it's going to be. Will there be something we'll have to do down the road similar to the movie theater? If it's connected somehow, like and they'll have to think about.
This is really legislation related to air quality in schools. And it's a requirement that we have a comprehensive assessment done every four years, the first of which must be. Completed by January first of twenty four.
And is it a pass fail kind of thing? Or, you know, I mean, it's going to lead to something, right?
Success and they'll make recommendations.
Right, okay.
Come of which they need to be fixed right away. Some may be required to be fixed at a long term basis or maintained.
It is something that the CAPS, the Connecticut Association of Public School Supervisors is following very closely. Because you're right, it could turn into. Something an enormous cost for districts across the board. I mean, I think they pegged. The the work at well over $300 million statewide as they're talking about this kind of work. Things do change, right? So our elementary schools have unit ventilators. If you're going to build a new building, you're not, you can't put unit ventilators anymore, you know, but we manage them very carefully, the way that we use them and the filter changes, all the P and M that we do on them. Keeps them running well and keeps our air cool. So we we're confident that because we do lots of our own testing that the results will be. Supportive of what we're doing. But as you said, you don't know what's going to come down. So we are watching it very closely through CAPS. As the whole state is.
I have a question about the media and innovation center. That's crossed out. Can you just tell me or tell us what that was?
Yep. So that's at the high school specifically. And so. We looked at and we invested some of the money into into that last year as well. We really looked to continue, but what we were able to do is in-house a lot of that work. So instead of having to bring in carpenters and others, we're able to use our in-house carpenter electricians. And so we've saved a significant amount. So we still have a balance there too.
This is like the building. It's it's not so much the equipment or the innovation.
No, it's really the structure in the library.
The structure.
And that's we still, you'll see, we still have it in the district because we're looking at our elementary schools and those libraries, but we're looking at. Creating spaces that are truly designed for students using the design thinking process. So they've got spaces. You mentioned the maker space, right? So that still exists, but there's also collaborative classroom like space for students to meet and to talk and to. You know, to plan. There's also, there's fabrication spaces. There are production spaces like the podcast studio and green room and those kinds of things. And. You know, so really thinking about what does the design process look like and how do we support it structurally? So that the students are in the right spaces to do the right. That's what those innovation spaces kind of are all about. I mean, there's a lot more to it, but. It's furniture pieces, other things like that.
Now, let's get through the rest of this capital. We're thirty minutes over, so.
I don't know my, what's happening is the car. Oh, I'm so sorry.
You have these slides. They're. They're my best looking slide, so I had to include them, but I won't speak to them. I think we just talked about the the planetarium here, but wanted to have some of the information about it and certainly. I'm glad to talk more about it, as you can imagine, but gross through the breakdown and the capital campaign that's been going on and. Renovate the dome dot com. As is a radar type of all the work that's been going on with lots of visuals and lateness and ways to learn too. Let's just finish off. Again, transportation, we've been in a cycle. As you know, we've got twenty one or so vehicles. We replace three per year. With our special education programs. So those are 65,000 each. And then there's maintenance vehicle here. We tried to repurpose one of the vans and turned out that it just, there's a reason we need to replace it. It just doesn't, doesn't do that work. We thought and hope that we could get something less expensive. You really can't for. The the need that we have. So this is part of when you bring in the skilled professionals that we have, we have to give them the equipment that they need. So as they're going to the site, they can do the work that needs to get done. That's what the maintenance vehicle is about. If we could, I'd ask for five of them. So we'd do it right away, but we were not going to do that. So we'll be doing this annually to bring in those those vehicles for them to use in district. And then our technology lease, which we've been doing for years. The, you know, with the last couple of years, there's more technology embedded than we had been. There's a more more costs and also built into this is some of the network costs around firewalls, things like that are all part of this. And then also it's the assistive technology that we use with our special education students. Who have some of the greatest needs and we're able to now technology is is able to do miraculous things for kids and families who maybe they. Who have those kinds of needs, whether it's communication, otherwise mobility, other things, especially letters rolled into that. And that's, these are some of the changes that we made. You saw them crossed out, but, you know, really trying to squeeze it down as much as we can, given the challenges that. Board of Finance shared with us along the way. So we brought our total number here down to four point six. I think we were five point something in the books to begin. So we're able to bring down a little over $600,000. Again, those are deferrals and we'll look at them and what have you, but. We feel comfortable doing.
Thank you very much. So we'll have another, as I said before, we'll have another opportunity to. Dive in deeper with Brian and his team. So if you have questions that you want, we'll get them to Tom and Rita and actually. Can you bring Robin back in? Because we didn't have, we never got a chance to see her. Robert, are you out there? There you are.
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
No, I was just going to make a quick comment about the guidance counselors. I just thought, I just want to say from my experience, I was a junior in college and a freshman in college and. I got nervous about guidance counselors and we picked a private guidance counselor and it was a terrible experience and the new Canadian guidance counselors were. Amazing and we should have never gone that route and. I just could not be more happy with the experience we had at the guidance counselors at New Canaan High School.
Thank you, Robin. That's great.
I think that sounds like.
I do not pros it.
Public service. That sounds like a paid commercial. Thank you, Robin. That's awesome. All right. So with that, if if you have questions, again, just we need to get them to Tom and Rita and then we'll pass them on to Brian, but. Great questions tonight. I'm sure there'll be more. One of the things that. I think we'd like to hear about is the impact of the new building, which we didn't get to tonight, but the new, you know, how that will impact future. Budgets and maybe you can talk to us about that. The other thing we didn't talk about much and it's one of our subjects that we've had over the years, but we never mentioned cafeteria. So we like to go through that a little bit and and talk about that. We know that's always a good subject. So there'll be other questions that we have for you. So, but thank you for tonight. Great start. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon. Nice meeting you. Yeah, take two minutes. Let's clear the room and get back to the meeting here. We've got a lot to do here. So. Next up, we have the police. Thirty minutes set aside. We don't need to use all of it. You can abbreviate if you want. If you guys want to get home. I know you have a lot to do. Good. Thank you, chief. Welcome. Floor is yours.
Right. Thank you, everyone. This is our budget presentation and certainly. Wolf and I have worked on it for months now, but it started with the tire chief, Pearl Kowski, so we'll give him some credit for. Initially starting the framework for this. And. You know, we've worked hard to. Look at it closely and as I said to our. Board of Finance that purposely really. Kept focus and kept it lean because we know the. The building in the training center is moving out there and that's that's going to be a significant budget item. So. Really kept our budget requests capital and. Operating to our. Minimum means that we could focus on and really kept it as fast as we could. We'll start quickly with animal control. You can see by some of these pictures, we do much more than just capture dogs and return it to the home. Faster rate of wildlife in town. Numerous hundreds of calls of service for things, bear sightings, bobcats. We help with stray animals from other towns. We have mutual aid and. Work with Darian specifically and some. Items and our animal control, she's great. About community education and helping out and informing people how to scare off wildlife, keep the bears at bay and. Coyotes out of the backyard and protect your family pets and those sorts of things. For the capital budget request, we requested $10,000 for a fence. That's to. Prove the new Canaan Vet Clinic where we will have a emergency. Shelter in case our shelter at the highway department goes down. Been fortunate this winter, spending relatively mild, but when the temperature is really dipped low. It's a challenging building to keep warm and keep to standard that we can actually house animals there if we had to for an extended period of time. And then. The operating request is 95,000. That's a bit of a decrease, but we've. Looked at the replacing the current animal control officer. She's going to retire this year. And we we changed. Some of the job description of the new person that we're going to hire and. Changed it for whatever reason, that position was considered a department head position. We don't really know why. I think it's just kind of one of those historical things that was always. Given that title, but it doesn't need to be and it didn't be. So we're going to reduce the salary a little bit, compensate it to to what they're got responsibility to be.
Do you know, do you know when she's retiring? The date?
I don't have a date yet. It's going to be this summer. She's trying to fade out. She had some. Stay on board. She was planning on leaving. Last year, but she had some some things come up. She had to remain on board with us for a little bit longer. So I think it'll be by summertime.
Right. The plan is to take on a part time animal controller first to kind of train that person to take over. So when she's confident that that person's prepared to take on.
Can you guys just make a note for us? Because we'd love to have her here, you know, in her final month, at least to say thank you, because she's been amazing. She's done a great job. So, you know, please, please make sure she gets to our either June meeting or July meeting. Thank you.
Okay, on to the police department. Our highlights that we've done this year, we'll go through these pretty quickly, but would just give you an idea of kind of. An overall segment of things that we respond to.
Just looking at our calls for service, we had over 14,000 calls for service in 2022, which. Was an uptick from 2021 where we had just almost 13,000 calls for service. As you can see, some of our higher call types, school checks, hazard calls, broadening identity theft. You know, family disputes, larcenies and stolen vehicles. One good thing is the stolen vehicles have gone down. There was 39 in 2021, but. Lot of hard work by our detectives with other officers and detectives throughout the county were able to reduce those with some help from the court as well. So we've seen a good reduction in those. Obviously, we are first responders. We go to all medical calls first from any any nine one one vehicle call. So. There was over 1,286 medical assists, which was down a little bit from 2021, which was 1329. And as you can see, we have a lot of motor vehicle violations and alarm response calls as well. And some of our highlights. Our community impact officer program is a continued success. Officer Vartuli did a great job in 2022. And Officer Cece has taken over and she's also doing a great job here for 2023. Some of the things they do is they they handle all calls for service downtown during daytime hours. They educate the public. They have coffee with the cop, food and tow drives for the human services. They do a lot of great job with them. They liaison with the businesses and we are running a citizens academy now in March 28th and they're going to spearhead that as well. That's a great educational tool for us to kind of give the the public a little idea of what we do as a department. So that's another program. We're really happy to. To pick up again after getting away from the COVID days. We also added an additional school resource officer, Officer Gibson. He's newly trained and his primary. Mission is to provide support to the public elementary schools and Officer Gibson is doing a great job. With the security awareness there. We're continuing our canine program. Officer Obando. Is our new Canaan officer. He's completed his training with Apollo. They've had over a dozen call outs already this year, conducting tracking and vehicle searches. And we also hired five new officers in 2022, two of whom were lateral transfers from New York. So they bring a lot of wealth of experience from their departments and three entry level. Officers at Tennessee Police Academy for approximately six months. And it takes about a year to get them on the road from when they're hired to go through the training process.
We'll get right into our capital summary. And we'll go right at the top, talk about the elephant in the room. There's a large request for. Vehicles. We're asking for six vehicles this year. Largely due to price increases that we saw last year, we did budget for three vehicles. three vehicles last year, but in the time between the budget got approved and we could order them Ford increased the pricing so dramatically that we could only afford to get two new vehicles last year out of the three. So we're moving some of that money forward and it's gonna help us defer some of the costs for these six vehicles, but uh, we need six vehicles. As you'll see in some of the upcoming slides, our fleet is, is aging rapidly. And this is increased, although it's dramatic, it's something that's come to us as a request from the public works department. They're having a hard time keeping up and maintaining our agent fleet. Unfortunately, the vehicles aren't repairable the way that they used to be. Uh, when Ford discontinued the Crown Victoria, it was a, just a stable platform that was easy to repair. If you needed a water heater, you'd bring it down, you get the part, put it in, back on the road in a couple of days. Um, we've had vehicles that were down for months this year on broken motor mounts, things that are relatively simple, but you just can't get the parts, can't get the parts, can't get them worked on. Some other things that, that, that go on the vehicles are so uh, technologically um, advanced that a lot of dealerships don't even have the computer software to keep up with the vehicles and, and the maintenance. And um, they've tiered their levels of dealerships. And where we would get a vehicle repaired at McMahon Ford, McMahon Ford doesn't have the computer software to actually work on the vehicle. So we had to take it to Stanford Ford. Now that reduces the number of cars that can get repaired in the time because they just have an overload in their system. So it's, it's, it's significant backlog. So we, we have a, a, a uh, very aged, aging fleet. Uh, I think out of our twenty vehicles, more than half are uh, over eighty thousand miles, which is kinda the benchmark that we, we've held. Uh, eighty, eighty-five thousand miles seems to be the, the measure of, of where we kind of start looking at, we, removing that, that vehicle from the frontline fleet to a secondary role. And if we can't use it in a secondary role, we'll turn it over to another department in town. Um, but again, that was, those were for vehicles that we could easily repair, that we could, when they did go down, when they have that high mileage and not only high mileage, high, high hour usage. It's not just a car that's driven where you would, you know, put the miles on like a personal vehicle. These cars are out on the road twenty-four seven. Um, and it's, it's the hours of usage that they get. So um, that is our biggest request out of, out of the four seventy-two that we're asking for a capital budget request. Uh, the biggest chunk is those six vehicles. The other items, again, we went over those with a fine tooth comb, uh, the, the board of finance. And those are just maintenance things that we have to repair. We have to, we have to get new defibrillators. We have to uh, replace the battery backup for our uh, our dispatch center and the mobile DAP terminals, bulletproof vests, tasers, those things just age out and we have to cycle those out. So those are no, there's no real wants in those, in that list there. It's all, it's all our needs basis. Again, as I discussed with the uh, with the vehicles, we, we've been asked by the highway to uh, to start getting rid of that old fleet and start uh, updating things so we can uh, we can help them better down, down there for their turnaround on repairs. And uh, there's a significant lead time on vehicles. Fortunately, we're not faced with the same challenges that the fire department or the ambulance are facing, but uh, we, we do look at about six months before we can get the cars delivered from Ford and then we have to get them to our outfitter to put all the equipment in, all of the electrical equipment, the cages in them, the lights and all those sorts of things, radios. So it is, it is a, a bit of a lead time for us. Um, and you can see there at the bottom, last year we did get two new vehicles. We expected to get three, but we, with the price increases, we can only get two. So we're gonna do an adjustment this year. We're asking for six this year. Once we get the six, we'll get back on a four-three, four-three schedule. So then, then I think that will be uh, stabilize the fleet and keep us current. And that's the uh, what surrounding towns do. This is, this is, this slide's been around for a little while. Um, we'll have to update and see what, what other departments are doing. We're, we're continuing with the same practices, but you know, towns like Darien and, and well, they, they seem to swap out their fleet regularly on a, on a three or four-year cycle. Um, they're swapping out their entire fleet and I think that's kinda where we're, we might be heading because you know, just the repair cost and the repair time is so significant. And these are describing what I just said, you know, our, our vehicles, uh, our twenty-four seven offices of the officers and they need to be reliable and dependable. And then when we start going down uh, one or two, three vehicles, it's, it's, it's a big impact on us because as we indicated, you know, it's, it's the frontline patrol officers, it's our SROs. We want our SROs to have marked police vehicles. That presence is significant. We have the CIO officer that's now downtown, so we have to have that person have the vehicle. So we do have more and more roles that require these frontline vehicles. And uh, when they go down for two or three months at a time, it's a significant impact on our, on our operations. There's a list of all of our vehicles and you can see, uh, you know, out of those twenty or so vehicles, a, a good chunk of them, over half are uh, over that eighty-five thousand threshold, well over that eighty-five thousand mile threshold. So like I said, our, our goal is to replace some of those high, high mileage vehicles, high maintenance vehicles, and we're gonna work closely with the, the highway department to identify um, ways that we can improve um, we can improve the fleet and, and make their life a little bit easier and, and quicker to turn over and, and hopefully uh, the supply chain problems will straighten out in, in the next year or two. That's what I have for capital. Any questions on capital?
Questions?
Mike doing, is that the canine? Is that budget or is that capital?
Put that on operating.
Operating, yeah.
Is there an idea? I mean, uh, obviously you're saying like a, a lot of the uh, cars are past their useful life and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not an expert. I don't know if eighty, eighty-five thousand miles in time that they're used. Is there a different strategy going forward rather than to come here next year and say, hey, listen, you know, a third of our fleet is, is eighty-five thousand and past its useful life and the, the place here or in Stanford can't replace the technology. Is, should we consider, and, and this is maybe is a, a thought of strategy of maybe there should be a, a, a more of a, every two or three years, replacing the vehicles that are outfitted or it, it, this would be your numbers, not mine. Um, a different strategy instead of saying, hey, listen, our units are past their useful life. How did we get here? We need new ones or better ones or, you know, more appropriate ones. Maybe being a, a look forward saying, you know what technology is improving every year and a half, two years, three years, maybe we shouldn't purchase, buy in or lease this, this vehicle, uh, because we know that uh, they're not the Crown Victorias, that they can go to four hundred. Listen, those, those were the, I can't believe they stopped using those things would run forever and you can re, you could replace some of the things. You could have three, four hundred thousand miles on them and they still were fantastic. Maybe the shocks weren't as great or the seats weren't as comfortable, but they ran. Now it's, it's not. So I'm just, I'm, I'm suggesting, introducing the idea of this isn't, this is not, we're not in the Crown Vicks anymore, right? So maybe, maybe we should have an idea of uh,
I would love to and, and, and perhaps Chevy would come out someday with a police package. But right now Ford is the only game in town. They make the police interceptor SUV. It looks like an Explorer, but it's, it's, it's police built. It's, it's, it's built to accommodate all of the electronics, all of the, the equipment that goes into these vehicles and you know, there's a Toyota out there that could do the same thing. You know, I, you just don't know if those vehicles could accept the, the type of equipment that goes into it and you would, and would anybody be able to work on those with that equipment? So
Agreed.
A challenge. So yeah, I, I would love to keep my eyes open and if there is uh,
I'm not saying replacement Toyota. I'm saying rather than say, hey, listen, I, I, I'm all about process and procedure and, and, and applying the process and procedure so that we don't get in a position that says you're sitting there saying, we had three of our cars two months out of bounds, right? We don't, nobody here wants that. I'm saying that have a process procedure that is, okay, then that, there, here's a, somebody that can help assist or repair or adjust, and it's not gonna be that three of our cars that, that aren't current or can't go to this and we're in a queue. I'm just saying that thinking, thinking above saying maybe there's a, there's a, not say a better process, a different one that, that, that would make your division be supported better. And that's really the idea is to make sure that you guys have everything that you need to perform what you need to do.
And, and I think we did, and, and I think it just comes down to having a stable platform to operate out of and, 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 and that's where it's, it kinda fell short when that Crown Vic went away. Um, but you know, and that's my hope that this, this platform that the police intercepter platform that Ford has will become stable and something that we can rely on much of the way that we did.
Great.
You know, and, and, and we're gonna keep looking at that and, and looking at ways and, and, you know, a little anecdotal uh, story here, you know, the two vehicles that were down, we actually have an officer that's uh, so you know, a mechanic. He was a trained mechanic and he kinda went down and said, well, you know, here's a workaround that could fix this problem. We can get, at least get these vehicles back on the road. It's not, it's not a perfect fix, but it'll get the vehicle back on the road. And he was able to make, make a suggestion and got, got two of our vehicles back on the road. Again, not a perfect fix, cause it's not a hundred percent, but it's enough to get our vehicles back on the road. So
Amazing for that per, amazing for that person, but I think, I mean, I don't wanna speak for anybody, but I think everyone are huge supporters of you guys. And we want you to have the proper equipment to, to perform what you guys need to do.
And I think we are. I think, I think we are by continuing in, in, in this process. And I think we can get this adjustment to stabilize our fleet. We're gonna, you know, keep doing that. And, and when I say eighty-five thousand miles and it's aging, it's not to mean that that vehicle's no good to us anymore. It just maybe takes a secondary role. It may be that, that car that goes down to the high school and sits there all day and it's not on patrol all day long. It's great. Maybe a car that goes into a, an administrative role where it's, it's not technically not gonna be an emergency response vehicle day to day. So we wanna keep our best vehicles out in our patrols that are out there every single day that are responding to the nine-one-one calls. But you know, so, and, and so we've kinda already have that, that practice in place. Um, we just kinda need that, that stable platform of vehicle. Hopefully Ford will come around.
Good. Thank you, Mario.
Is it worth investigating having an uh, mechanic? Does, does the town have?
Oh, town, yeah.
The town does.
Yeah.
Is, is there any way to?
Well, to be specialized, to specialize in all that computer stuff, there's no way you can, you can, you can change the oil and do the tire rotations and all that stuff, but you're not getting into computer.
Yeah, no.
You need an astronaut.
Like the emergency brakes on them now are not mechanical anymore. They're electronic. You need a software system to repair when the emergency brake fails. So it's, you know, it's just, it's something that, you know, is, is pretty frustrating.
How, how confident?
For Tigers guys and our guys.
How confident are you? Are, are the dealers in terms of six months? And that's pretty good actually these days.
Confident. That's a minimum. That's the soonest we would get it.
Yeah.
And we're, last year we waited over a year for new vehicles.
Yeah.
That could be a long time.
Yeah. So we don't even know if, we're gonna be sitting here again next year with need for more. Who knows? But you know, at least
Seems like things are easing up the chips.
A little bit, but not much, not much.
Still waiting on those uh, coolant lines though.
Yeah. Okay, let's keep moving.
So our operating summary, uh, seven point one, it's a three point six five increase from FY twenty-four to twenty-three. Um, and as it is year to year, that, that's largely due to contractual increases. Um, some things for, for staffing wise that we're seeing some improvements are with this latest uh, contract. The union officers have, have uh, got a uh, deferred retirement plan that, what that does, it allows us to forecast when those officers are leaving. For example, we know that two officers are leaving this summer. They've entered into this retirement plan. And they confirm that they're leaving in, in the, the summer. So we can now hire for those officers, which the commission did last night at their uh, at their uh, meeting last night. So those two officers will, actually one of them will go to the uh, police academy in April. We're gonna be ahead of the curve. Instead of that, that almost a year timeframe before getting that person back on the road, we'll be a few months ahead of that and, and you'll see that reflected in our projected overtime costs that we can anticipate having better staffing and more complete staffing, a little bit better with, with uh, with this retirement plan.
You're still using the software that?
Yeah. So I, I have a slide coming up that, that our scheduling software that uh, will show where our, all of our overtime goes. And it's pretty easy for us to come up with those numbers and track where everything's um, being spent. Like I said, our, we have uh, currently one officer at the police academy. She's gonna graduate in uh, late July. We have two officers on field training. One just graduated last weekend. Another officer is coming off of field training uh, end of the month. And then the third officer should be out on the road shortly after that. We have those two retirements that were confirmed for the summer. So uh, the commission hired two more officers last night. We're gonna get those sworn in probably by the end of the month and get them uh, up and running. So we're in good shape staffing wise. We're in, we're in pretty good shape, which a lot of other departments can't say that. Um, you know, I was at the uh, police cabinet graduation for one of our most recent officers at, up at Bridgeport. Bridgeport ran, hosted a, a police academy and um, Bridgeport is down several hundred officers. And this academy class run by the city of Bridgeport only had five officers for Bridgeport. And, and you know, they had some other officers from other agencies, but, but I, I couldn't imagine being down hundreds of officers or even thirty or forty officers. We're fortunate enough where we're, we're still uh, we still can maintain our standards and, and hire who we wanna hire and who we need to hire and who fits best for our community. Um, but fortunately we're not faced with the deficits in some of those bigger cities. So we're in really, really good shape staffing wise. So it's, that's nice to hear. Nice to see.
There's been a lot of great feedback with the new hires too.
Yeah.
You know, it's, yeah, very friendly, very forward-facing staff. So
We're finding, we're finding the good ones.
We're able to be choosy, which is good.
So here's a breakdown of our overtime for last year. Uh, you can see the highest driver of it is training, which is always a good thing to see. Um, and then the, the other areas are, are typical time off and contractual obligations as far as holidays and, and uh, order ends and those sorts of things and short shifts and second supervisor. Um, but to focus more on the, the, the training highlights, um, you can see we had some significant amount of training last year.
Sure. We had uh, over three thousand hours of mandatory training. Uh, and that's the bare minimum that we need to do to uh, stay up to state and clear uh, guidelines and mandates. Uh, some of those included firearms training, emergency dispatch, emergency medical response, police certification, de-escalation, body camera, supervisory training and much more. Uh, obviously we don't wanna do just the bare minimum of training, so we try to get our officers as much training as possible. Uh, with a strong cadre of instructors in-house and also sending officers to other uh, police academy and other venues. Uh, we had active threat training. Scenario-based training that used use of force, defensive tactics instructors, as well as de-escalation instructors to kinda pull that together to help our officers uh, make better decisions and uh, have better outcomes. Uh, we had a lot of investigative trainings for topics such as fraud, technical investigations, internal affairs investigations and Crystal County Detective Bureau. We had advanced leadership training for two of our lieutenants, uh, the FBI command leadership institute. School research officer training for our new officer and uh, maintaining training for the other officers as well and uh, and many other topics as well.
Right. So with that, our uh, overtime request is five twenty-three. That's a reduction from last year. And um, you know, we're confident that that's, that's gonna be a, a solid number for us. Um, and again, I think that's based on our staffing levels being pretty solid and, and being able to predict when people are leaving and retiring and, and trying to get ahead of the curve on those things. So we're hopeful that we can, we can hit that mark. And that is it.
Questions?
Oh yeah, just um, when we had talked, there was a question about the canine.
Yeah. So we discussed that at board of finance and I think the consensus was to wait and add that item next budget cycle. So we currently have enough in the funds, um, the donation account for the canine program to sustain that easily for the, the next year. And moving forward, we'll, we'll roll that into our regular operating cost. And I think that's, that's where it should reside.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna be doing any more fundraising, fundraising and stop for that.
Yeah.
And this will roll into a, a fixed item. And this will roll into a a fixed item in our in our budget.
Yeah, just let, I mean, people, some people know about this, so we've been getting donations from the community to fund the and if you want to talk about the what the K nine program is, it just didn't make sense that we were asking the the community to pay for it, not just have it come out of the operating budget. Can you just describe what that?
I think it started in its, you know, beginning years that it was a program that was difficult to kickstart fully fund with taxpayer dollars. And I think that's where the the genesis came from. Starting it as a donation thing and 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 that's where it kind of stayed for till now. But the the K nine program, you know, obviously had some rocky years a couple of years back, but we've got that dog back on the road with Officer Obando, who's doing a phenomenal work with it. The dog's doing a lot of tracking, a lot of mutual aid and helping out. It tracked a woman that was suffering some some yes, she was endangered and 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 running around in a cold, cold, wet night and was able to track her down. What else has he done? He's done a lot of mutual aid tracks with other agencies.
Burglary in town.
And and he's got a great Instagram page, too.
Follow.
Yeah, follow, so.
We'll have that as a, I'm sorry. Well, it'll be a recurring expense then moving forward. Good, because you guys shouldn't be hat in hand trying to get money for the
No.
That program.
We'll be able to roll that in and it'll probably be about a twenty thousand dollar light item with the the cost of running the program, the cost of the stipends, the cost of the training. So that'll be an operating item. With a caveat that, you know, eventually every five, six, eight years, it's going to need he's going to need a new vehicle. So those might be some capital expenses.
The dog's going to need a new vehicle? The dog's going to need a new vehicle.
Multi tasks. Yeah, it does. It does require a special vehicle, though.
I know.
Any other questions? Mike, did you have anything else?
That's it. No, great job. Thank you.
So the, just quickly on the SRO, the rotating SRO as Officer Gibson, can you just touch on, he's going from the three elementary schools, right? He's going from, he's just doing a quick like a a three, is it a three?
So he's focusing on three elementary schools in in his task. You know, obviously, the officers at Saks and the high school are more deeply involved in the school community and when what the student needs, working closely with guidance and all those, the the day to day operation, because those kids are are dealing with a lot more things on their plate. Officer Gibson's was tasked with focusing primarily on security of the elementary schools. Because the elementary schools, they do have the school monitors, but they didn't have anything else. They didn't have any other but he focused any anything else focusing on their actual physical security and those sorts of things. So Shane's been hitting it out of the park. When I go to some of these district meetings, some of the cab meetings, crisis advisory board meetings, and the the principals and assistant principals from the elementary schools are there, you can just see the relief on their face. They're just so happy and satisfied to have somebody focusing on their security and they're 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 giving them their attention. So he does, he does focus on each school. And we give him a lot of latitude wherever he needs to be on a given day. He'll go to East School or West School or South School.
Is he able to actually have interaction with like students and get?
Yeah, yeah.
That's great. That's really
It's a balance. He goes in there and he interacts with the with the students and the staff and
It's great.
helps out whatever their needs are. So it's been a it's been a tremendous success.
Good, 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 good to hear. All right. Any questions? Any questions on Zoom? Anybody's hands up? Okay, good. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got fire, we've got Albie and company.
Thanks.
Good evening, guys.
How are you?
Thanks for, thanks for coming in. Oh.
All right. Good evening, Town Council. The Fire Department budget for FY twenty four. A couple highlights that just want to bring out for our twenty three goals and objectives. You know, we kept our level service. We did increase our efficiency through a capital purchase last year. It's getting, it's our alerting system getting us on the road a little faster through our dispatch center. We did increase our volunteer membership by seven, seven volunteers in two thousand twenty two calendar year. So that we increased that. And then we're currently implementing our new records management system, which is helping us track our data. Changing over, we were doing that with our old system, but this one's doing our payroll and some other things that we're working on now. So we're increasing capturing our information with that. Our statistics for F or a calendar year twenty two, we responded to eleven hundred seventy seven incidents. That's our breakdown. Fifty percent of them are fire alarms. We eighty six simultaneous incidents. Why is that important? That's a delay for the second call for our residents, not getting an apparatus within the the standard time that NFPA wants us to have somebody on scene in six minutes first on scene. So eighty six times we had those simultaneous incidents and that's where the volunteers coming in back staffing. You know, the station, they do get out and help us with that. Our Fire Marshal, Paul Payne, in his office, twenty five hundred Fire Marshal interactions, that's anywhere from plan review to the actual life safety inspections in our businesses and multifamilies. And also phone calls, fielding phone calls for tank removals. And you know, just getting incidents, copies of incidents and so on. So those are our numbers for those statistics, just to break down. And if I'm throw a question out if I'm going too fast with the data. Incidents by week, you know, Monday through Fridays are busiest times. And daytime is our busiest, our peak call volume. So our six personnel staff does still handle the major part of our incidents on a yearly basis. Support activities that the Fire Department's doing, we had eight thousand twenty five hours of training. That's important because that affects our our insurance service rating, ISO rating. Our career staff, three hours a day, volunteers about five hours a month. We inspect all four hundred of our water sources. Three hundred and twenty wet hydrants and forty four dry. So every year they're flushing them and and testing the dry hydrants, making sure we can still pump out of them. And then we make sure they're not full water before we go into the into the winter months. And I like to throw a shout out to the the staff members, both career and volunteer, on the twelve hundred hours of work they do on our apparatus that saves us from sending them out. We don't have a dedicated mechanic. Town Highway does what they can for us, but the specialty stuff would have to go to a vendor. And a lot of this is done in house to some degree by our people. So it's a lot of you know, and that's mostly light lights and electronics, as you just heard with the PD. We have members that can, you know, they wire stuff, they they redo that and make those those repairs there. So that's a great asset to us with the members that can do that. Pub Ed, which I'm real proud of this year. We did a hundred three pub ed events throughout the community, anywhere from our seasonal pop ups on Elm Street, Farmers Market, our schools normally that we always do downtown strolls and of course, our firehouse visits. So that's been a big experience for us. The volunteers and the career staff both been out there, really interacting with the community. So that's been a huge asset to us this year. And we launched a QR code with all our documents, everything that we did throughout the season. We developed a two sided paper to say change of smoke detectors, lithium ion batteries, you know, cooking, grilling, safety. Everything we did, we put on the town's website and you can access it through that QR code. So that's, we're trying to publicize that more and more so they can, they don't need to take paper with them. They just hit it with their phone and then they can access all those documents for us. So that's a huge benefit for us is getting that prevention out there. Where we did miss the our rescue task force capabilities. You'll hear our emergency manager ask for some protective clothing for all the services in his presentation. But we need, we need to get that to get our training done and get all the EMS, PD, fire working together and rescue task forces. That was on my hit list for two thousand twenty two and twenty three, and we haven't gotten there yet. You know, but that's, we're doing Stop the Bleed now throughout the town, which is great. And that's part of this task force. So that's one thing we missed. Pre-planning the commercial district with our new records management system. We need to capture data from all our stores, restaurants, and our firefighters have to go down and get that into our new records management system. We had a little tough time transferring that from our old system to the new system. And to be honest, it was pretty old. Going through the last few years, the the members didn't get out to do the pre-planning as we really needed to. Ultimately, that's going to protect property down the road. And that also can affect our insurance rating. It hopefully can help our commercial district keep that insurance rating low. And then taking advantage of grant funding, we put in for the the FEMA grant, we did not get that, or two of them we put in for, we weren't able to successfully get awards for those. And a few small grants, we haven't been able to get, but that's, we're still trying, the grant writers helping us out this year with some new, some new submissions. So hopefully this year we'll have a different outcome. Our goals and objectives for twenty four. I want to start look really looking into the national standards that, you know, we we try to achieve to to get to and see where we're lacking, where we're excelling and take a look at them a little closer. That could be again, ISO or NFPA, Center for Excellence. We want to continue to capitalize on our pub ed opportunities. Our records management system, we continue to implement every day. We're working on that. And grant funding opportunities. So we're looking at different ones besides just the the federal ones that come down for fire departments, but we're looking at more community grants, smaller grants that we can use for public education displays and smoke detectors and such. So that's, you know, we're looking at those smaller ones since the big ones in and we'll, you know, we're just, we're just waiting to hear. So the numbers, our operating budget, four point five million, it was a five point seven eight percent increase, almost a quarter million dollar increase. Where's our drivers? Two, two and a half percent salary increase for our staff. I recalculated the holiday time. So I have a little breakout here of what that means. In the Fire Department, we're position for position hiring. So each firefighter receives thirteen holidays that they need to take off throughout the calendar year. And I have to replace that firefighter with another firefighter at time and a half. So twenty four firefighters, thirteen holidays apiece. That's where our number comes down and it's a pretty large number on the on the budget, I think it was three hundred and three hundred twelve thousand, which was a pretty significant increase. So I think that was the almost, it was twenty two percent increase. But that was the driver. I recalculated. I didn't take an average as it has been prior to me doing a full year's budget. They were using an average coming into it. And what I've seen over the last year is they have to use thirteen holidays. All our firefighters have their bank filled with six and they have to use them. So they're going to burn thirteen times twenty four. So that's where that's a real number that we have to replace. My training time had to go up. I'll get break into that one a little bit. Career staff in their contract, it's thirty hours annually. So that's seven hundred and forty staff hours at a cost of thirty thousand. That's going to be filled by overtime. Officer training that is required by OSHA and ISO requires additional training. And that's where our that's seventy six hundred, seventy seven hundred comes from our special operations, which is our mutual aid agreement between our regional mutually agreement hazmat team and the communications team. We have five members assigned between the two teams and their training requirements require our members to go to, to go to outside of town, which is the twenty eight thousand. And the big one is our EMS recertification, which currently is being done online and we're in the middle of a two year cycle. So the vendor is providing one day a month of training online. And which means I have to have eighteen firefighters on overtime at for every class. So that's where the fifty one thousand comes from. That is something that I'm actively looking at for next calendar year when it starts. When the, when the process starts again, we're going to have three quarters to seven eighths of it inside the firehouse on four shifts versus the the online portion of it. There's a value to the practical training, too, but the Connecticut Division EMS, they changed a few things that allowed for online training and continuing ed this way. And they also, the state changed the three year cycle to a two year cycle. So it's really put us in a bind, trying to get everybody caught up onto the cycle. But that is something on the radar to change moving forward. Probably after calendar year twenty three, but into twenty four, making that change to get more of it in the firehouse versus versus the online component where I wouldn't have, I would pay on the training side versus the training overtime side. So I'd have to pay my vendor times four versus the overtime. And then our live fire and firefighter one programs. That's our bringing, trying to bring the career and the volunteer staff together and having more opportunities for the two groups to train together. At live fire environments that were that communication and that really knowing each other makes a difference. So adding a second live fire event and providing the fire of fire one class in town, which makes it easier for our volunteers to get the training and really help them out with their families so they can finish the class and be active members of the department. So it's cost involved, but hopefully that gives us years of service prior to. Uh, callback, that's been, it's, we've been getting called for mutual aid more often. But that that one has increased a little bit based on our partners, our mutually partners calling us more often. And the other large increase was the required physicals. Myself and HR have been looking at how the town has been doing physicals over the last few years. We're not quite meeting our NFPA requirements and OSHA requirements on how they're, we're getting physicals done, which is a good thing. But we're really not supposed to be using our health insurance to do that. So we're relooking at that. So I I put the the individual physical price for each member in the budget to start looking at transferring over to a department, a truly department mandated physical where I have a doctor that is assigned occupational health doctor to the department that's looking at each individual as OSHA requires and is recommended by NFPA. So that's the big increase in the percentage increase in the budget. And other small, large percentage increases, but reasonably a small amount. Educational incentives went up because of members taking classes and they have a stipend every year for those classes. So they've been certified in something. So that continues to go up every year. And we added travel back in for out of town conferences. The, that's a three way split between the union, the company and the town. When somebody goes to a a fire expo, whether it's Indianapolis, if they go, you know, up in, you know, Massachusetts, it takes something that they stay overnight and there's travel involved. So that that's where that came back into the budget. We increased our food budget a little bit for some of the events that we do, both for the volunteers and for town events such as the nine eleven ceremony and some of the pub ed stuff that we're doing, that we're providing water and snacks, Halloween candy and so on. So that's where that number is. So those are the big, big percentage increases. But again, it's only, it is only eighty seven fifty. That was the operating side. If there's any questions. That was the operating side. I don't know if there's any questions on that. I know it was quick.
Any questions for operating?
We like quick.
I just want to be accurate. That's the only thing. So just want to make you, um. Obviously, big numbers on that holiday and stuff, but it, those true hard numbers.
Thanks, Alvin.
Does it include hot dogs?
On Memorial Day. That's the company. I'll be honest. That's uh, that is the fire company.
Is it Nathan's or Sabre's?
I'll have to, I'm a Sabre fan, so I'll make sure of that this year though. So. Okay, we'll have the secret stash. Okay, no, uh, if there's not, not. Very good.
Double that budget.
Yeah. He knows, he knows the hot dogs. So um, okay, moving into the capital plan, um. Our request is uh almost one point two million. The big um driver of this is a replacing our uh apparatus, our nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, pumper that we on schedule at twenty-five years. So. It, this is this twenty-fifth year uh of, of service. Uh, and we're not expecting that to be in service for another two to three years. Based on the supply chain and the uh, the build out time of that apparatus. So um. Engine two still in service and it's running um. It's right now, it's running a second due piece. Um. I'll get into that one a little more. Let me, there's our engineer. So it's twenty-six years old right now. Um, why it needs replacement versus refurb? We looked at uh trying to refurbish it. It's not meeting our current operational plan. Uh, it's, it doesn't, it's a lot of NFPA series. It's pretty far out of what we consider compliance now. Um, with the cab, with some of the protections that the cab does. So to refurb it, we're really chasing, we're putting a lot of money into something that's still not going to meet that current NFPA standard. Uh, and we're really looking at putting more water on wheels. That's our uh end game. Our goal is to uh increase the volume of portable water uh in town. So um. In, we're in discussions on it of trying to get somewhere over a thousand gallons on it and still keep it a single axle. Um, but it's not going to quite be our tanker size, but that'll give us a, a third due piece out. That uh brings that extra water and just like now our tankers out of service. It provides the backup when the tanker's out and we're not waiting for mutual aid, which is ten to twelve minutes away for our first dude tanker right now. Um, so that's the um thought process on the new engine.
So key on that for one second, and uh my brother is a captain of Jersey Fire Department as my dad. Okay, yes. My, my point is, is that technology has increased so quickly, especially in the last three years. And we just heard the police department saying, hey, these cars are three, four years old and they're not meeting grade. You said this, this is how, how old?
This apparatus twenty-six years old.
So it, it, today's market of, of how you guys operate and everything and uh this probably, even if you outfitted. Times whatever, uh, the, the new ones are going to be a lot more appropriate and to code and to, to be functional today.
Correct. Always meet the newest NFPA standards. And when we're looking at some of the NFPA stuff, we're the protections that are in there. Um, believe it or not, air conditioning is a NFPA standard because of hearing loss in the fire service. So this rate, this apparatus, we have to keep the windows open, which is bad for the firefighters that are responding. Because it's getting super hot in the cab. They open the windows and now they're having hearing deficit. So I can have a, an injury based on that. Um, it doesn't have rollover protections. That the, the newer apparatus has and certain, you know, some of the stuff with the braking. So tho- those are the big things we're worried about. And the nice thing about all the electronics and most of these are pretty easy to. Honestly, we don't like electronics in the fire trucks, but they'll, they do come with a lot of safe checks and balances in there. But it, which will come with the new NFPA standard. Um, so. The, it's, so we do have that technology concern, but it's not a huge concern is, you know, some of the stuff that the police have to do for uh their technology.
If you, if you can get, if you can get twenty-six years out of a truck, sign me up. I mean, that's.
I think I honestly with today, the way apparatus is getting built. It, you can, we can get close to thirty on some of the new stuff.
That's great.
And we're rotating stuff. Like I mentioned, the members are doing a lot of inside work on them and they're um. You know, and it's, we're getting, you know, and it's getting much better and we can push longer on them.
The job of this truck is that, is like a, is it an attack truck or how, where is that in the um?
This all, my past chief Ed Carl, anytime he could jump in, but this was our, what was considered our water supply truck. So this would go seek, this would be the one that would be pumping at a pond on a hydrant. It had a lot of hose on it. And if you want to expand on that.
Okay, as you all know, it takes a lot of water to put out a big fire. This is the one that helped us get it, the water from a hydrant to the fire or from a drafting site. Fire or it went and filled up tankers because they get, could get the water to the fire. So uh, refer to it as a supply truck is the easiest way to look at it. Um, it did a great job for what it did. Um. Would, if we had a little more money back then, would we have designed it a little bit differently? Yes, but it um. It accomplishes job. It's at near its end of life. It still runs and drives well. But it doesn't have ABS. It doesn't have the same roof crush technology that a new truck has. So I'm not saying we're gonna roll over a truck, but if a limb falls on the truck, it's not going to hold up as much as. A new truck will.
There's no value in these old trucks once they're finished.
Very little. Usually not an engine, no.
So no trade value.
As Todd mentioned, even if we, it wouldn't even be, the money really wouldn't be expended this upcoming year, right? Because it's two years out.
So that's been, yeah, that's been the conversation with Board of Finance. The um. Sounds like what they want to do is make the approval and then the bonding will be a year later.
Right.
So I don't want to speak for them, but that's what it sounds like their, their plan is.
Right. Yeah.
Christine, has her hand up?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to ask if in the supplies, we're ordering lithium battery blankets, five blankets.
Not as of right now. We're still um, there, there's still a lot of discussion on those and uh. The value of them and as far as operations. So it's, it's, we haven't ordered them yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? That's, is that all on Capitol Alley?
Uh, just the last, the, the radios is what I went for the grant with. Um, unfortunately, we didn't get that and I'm asking for the, the additional funds uh for the um radios. To staff our, or equip our career people with the radios when they go mutually. That's where we're really at a deficit is when we go out of town, we cannot communicate with Norwalk Stanford. Right now, just Stanford, Wilton and Norwalk are on the cusp of going to the state. And if we do get called to Westport for a tanker, we cannot communicate with them. So we're just trying to get those uh, what we call tri-band radios into the hands of the career firefighters who go mutually. Otherwise, we're very well equipped with radios for in-town incidents.
Chief, the uh one, two, one point two five four versus the one seventy-five thousand dollar difference. Is that just a?
Sorry typo.
Typo, okay. I thought so. I, I.
I only changed this because uh last week, you know, we gave uh, you can see the staff car and the fire hose replacement.
I assumed. I just wanted to make sure for the, anyone else.
So in the, in the radios were um twenty-five thousand additional uh to last year's fifteen to give us uh, to buy the six radios. Uh, and obviously PPE is a big um. That's a uh NFPA requirement every year is the uh, is the PPE. I think that comes up in the second. Building improvements, one of the other things that we're looking to do again for volunteer um recruitment, retention uh. And space for stuff that we have. I want to take this training room that you see and their trophy case and make a wall unit out of it. And some what we call Murphy beds for volunteers to be in the firehouse. We do have volunteers that live on the touching towns. Which is a reasonably long time to come in for a call. So on, you know, if they want to stay for their duty nights or come in for storms, uh, we'll have the capacity that they can um. They can stay in a bunk and stay for the night uh comfortably uh barring any calls. And this also gets me storage space for our training goods and bookshelves and all that stuff that fixes that uh. But look to be a little bit of a mess there. So. And just maximizing the wall. This is something that we're looking uh partnering to some degree with the fire company. To uh, you know, fit out their trophy case. So they're, they are willing to uh offer funds for that um with the um. Uh, the town giving uh their side of the funds and they're willing to chip in with that. Uh, other capital requests, um, a new capital request was the um swift water equipment, water rescue equipment. We recognized from our hurricane um drill that we were lacking uh some equipment for. Fast-moving water, floodwaters, the stuff that we have for ice water rescue. Uh, it isn't good for the um, for the fast-moving water and it's also dated. So it's really needs to be replaced um anyway for even ice water. And we can do twofold here, do the ice water rescue and swift moving uh equipment uh moving forward. So in this, we looked at incidents that happened at Jelliffe Mill, um, you know, valley road area with the, with the water. Uh, table, the, the height of the river coming up and the movement. So just, it's going to be wet suits, um, some throw bags, a boat. Uh, that we can move a civilian and some uh personal flotation devices that we can use for us EMS PD. Or the civilian that's standing on top of their car uh in the middle of something they shouldn't have driven through. So uh, so that then we can at least equip that civilian with a, a proper vest if they did fall in the water. Uh, they, they would be able to stay afloat in the, in the fast-moving. And then our reoccurring um requests, SCBA cylinders. Our, our PPE is, I, it's, I think this year was a fifty thousand dollar request. Uh, that's a, we have a ten-year. Um, requirement on our PPE, PPE, it has to be downgraded at that time and they can't use it for active firefighting. Um, we do use recycle it and let the volunteers use it in their initial training. But even when they finish that, we have to provide them with a, with current PPE. And then you can see that we have uh AEDs and rescue tools that were on, in line for replacement, which uh the rescue tools are the grant request for two thousand twenty-three. So that was our capital presentation. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Alvin on capital?
All right.
That was pretty uh, pretty straightforward. While we have you guys, um, the volunteers, um. We had a program to attract more volunteers. Just want a quick uh report on that. And I don't know who wants to speak on that, but um, maybe Russ.
I'll just say we got a, a lot of applications. So Russ will give you the numbers, but it's been very good.
Yeah, no, we've had a banner year this year and in particular, I mean, beyond the work of everybody in the fire company. Uh, Stephen Krieger and Oliver Dennis, who are two relatively newer members in the fire company. You probably have all seen the red join the new Cana Fire Company signs on yards across town. Uh, in combination with the um significantly increased public interaction that the chief has been leading. Uh, we've had a banner year. I think we, we've got three just.
And Mike Dinen.
And Mike Dinen also being kind enough to put out, yeah, in, in the one, two, two or three stories on us.
We have five people in fire one. This currently. We had three people join this month and three applications for next month.
That's amazing. Yeah.
It's just getting him up the speed. It's going to take a little while.
And, and we know, look, the reality is we know the, the, the market for volunteers has changed and we've positioned ourselves accordingly. We know that a lot of the members that are joining are not New Canaan residents. They're younger and they aspire to be paid firefighters somewhere. And a large number of our most recent hires within our own department have come from our own volunteers. Uh, so it's actually made us, it's made us a bit of a, a place that people want to be because they know it's an effective program. It's good training. It's good leadership and it's a path to success for them. And we get five, six, seven years out of them. And then we, we can take the gear and give it to the next person once they get hired. So it's, and, and it's a free service of the town. So it's from our doom and gloom of coming in here for the, the ordinance, which has also been a contributing factor to this. Uh, we've seen some market changes for the better.
That's great. That's great news. And you know, you combine all the hours that, you know, you had stats up here, twelve hundred hours or whatever the numbers are with the volunteers. That's all money that we're saving. So I mean, it's, it's amazing, the, the work that goes into putting that together.
And that truck that the chief is, is positing and, and we're requesting uh is largely driven by the volunteers. That third due truck engine two right now, our, our means of getting water to the fire, besides what we bring with us. Is the volleys trucked by a large part. Um, and it's great because it gets our guys and gals out on the road and they love it being firefighters. But it also is an important tool that a lot of our career staff don't live in New Canaan, right? They, you know, they, they're further out of town now and we all know the Merrill Parkway and the challenges of trying to get anywhere on that. So having volunteers in New Canaan, Norwalk, Wilton, Stanford is a huge asset.
That's great. Love the idea of those Murphy beds. That's a, that's a nice uh touch.
Was it?
How many um, four, four active? Some are going through fire one now, but we have four uh active females and one associate uh female, right? McBrackton, those, yes.
So great diversity, growth and diversity as well, which we're really excited about. So, yeah.
Great. Any questions, guys? Anything else? Anybody? Robin, you okay out there? Good, good, good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. All right, next up. Save the best for last. We always do. Second to last, sorry. All right. Don't say that. All right. Emergency medical services. How are you, Nancy?
Yes. Hi, Nancy, President of New Canaan EMS, and this is our treasurer, Alec Montgomery.
Hey, Alec, how are you?
We don't have a presentation. Our budget's quite simple. When you look at the operating costs, there are three lines we can talk about. All the rest are what the town provides to us as internal, like infrastructure to run the building. So we don't control those costs at all. The first line, which is the uh paramedic contract, large increase. However, note, this is with Stanford, uh, Normal Hospital. We're finishing up the five-year fixed fee contract that we had at uh three nine nine. Five years before that, it was three nine zero. So for ten years, we paid about the same, ten years.
Wow.
They just were losing money on us. So they recalculated. Obviously, there are new costs with employment and all that kind of stuff. So it's a thirty-one percent increase. However, it is a fixed fee for five years.
Nice.
Yeah. We agreed that Stanford did not bid this year. It was just Norwalk. So we negotiated a couple of different options, a one-year contract, a three-year contract, a five-year, other manifestations. But we really liked the five-year fixed and that's what we're proposing at a thirty-one percent increase. Um, the next item is what would is labeled town contribution. Because we pay for a lot of equipment, lots of vendors. It's easier for EMS to pay all the bills for maintaining the vehicles, um, supplying the vehicles, all of medical gear. So the town gives us a, a check every month. And we put it into this bucket called town contribution. So we, we did not want to increase it this year because of the paramedic contract being so high. And also there's a bottom um number there that went up a little. So we kept it flat. And that is what we use to pay for ambulance supplies and rig maintenance. It does not cover everything, but we do have donor money that we um count on. And then the last of the three items that we would talk about is information services, which doesn't sound like a real IT that you might think of. This is with um CMed, which is an organization. That is required in the state of Connecticut to oversee ambulance activity. One half of this number at sixty-one thou is a per capita charge to all of the fourteen region one municipalities. For overseeing ambulance activity. Not much control there. It's just per capita charge. So that's about, you know, thirty something. The other is we contract with them to do our dispatch. So when a nine-one-one call comes in to the police station. They ask nine-one-one, what's your emergency? If it's medical. It's transferred to CMed. Their office happens to be in Shelton. That's where their center is. And that contract is about thirty. So the two put together from CMed. Is what it, it, it increases, what is it, three point five? Not much we can do about it. It's a pretty small number. So that's our operating budget. Okay, simple. Any questions?
Very simple, thanks.
Right. So the capital is a little more complicated. We run three ambulances. And every nine years, we want to replace it. So every three years, a new one is ordered and comes in and one is retired. We expected in this coming fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four, that it would be the. We expected in this coming fiscal year, twenty three, twenty four, that it would be the same as we've spent over the last X years at. Two thousand ten K. We found out it was like January, just before we went before the board of selectmen, that it was going to be two hundred and eighty thousand. Big jump explanations like the the semiconductors and the supply chain and just the cost of vehicles and all this. In addition, they said, we also, instead of having like a six monthly time, are looking at one to two years. We would normally get this approved and in October of that fiscal year, put in an order for a new ambulance and it arrives in the spring and we're all set. So with the increase, we are waiting for approval and the bonding and all that that might be needed. And as soon as we get that, we do want to put in the order, which is an accelerated order, but there's no down payment. So there's no financial impact. But in fact, it might not be paid for in twenty twenty, twenty twenty three, twenty four. It might be. Into the next fiscal year. So we might be hobbling with a ten year old ambulance. This one is really not our favorite right now. It's kind of, yeah, it's got problems. But anyway, so that's. That's the capital expense. It's the ambulance, the rotation every nine years. We try for a new one.
How safe is that two eighty number if it's out two years?
We think it's pretty safe. The the base cost is much lower, but you have to wrap it, you know, the decals and all the the emblems. And then lights and sirens and radios and cabinet configurations and things like that. So we're pretty comfortable with two eighty.
Well, we've been told two eighty and once. The budget is approved by the town and it's properly bonded, you sign a purchase order. For that price. So I think we can lock that price in the next four or five months.
Is there a secondary market for ambulances or?
There had been.
Yeah.
I'm not sure it's still Tiger Mike. This is still here. We tried to repurpose them. They were part of a trade in for a while, but. A long time ago, and I don't know when it changed, you couldn't sell an ambulance and get coverage insurance wise if it was more than nine years, which is why we tried to keep to that schedule.
That's right.
Tiger helps us with that, how to repossess it or use it as a trade in.
You want to use it as a food truck or something? Is that the?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking. Nothing. I was just wondering if I, you know, who knows, like if there's another nearby town that had maybe a seven year old ambulance, if it's if if it literally is a problem. Could we at least get, you know, at least a Band-Aid of getting a slightly better ambulance in the meantime, if we if we're concerned about safety?
We're not concerned about safety. It just creaks. The doors aren't always locked properly.
Don't leave your purse in the car.
Just like your car.
Studs on the tires. We've got drop chains for winter. It it's totally functional.
Well, one of the things that you talked about, the police were talking about eighty five thousand miles and we all think about eighty five thousand miles of normal driving, but these are not normal vehicles. I mean, the amount of idle time that an ambulance has or or a police car has just sitting there. It's it's.
We're not as bad. When we get on scene, we never turn off the vehicle in case it should not start again. When we get to the hospital, we do turn it off. So it idles while we're on scene.
Any questions for Nancy? I mean, this is, this is, guys, this is the time we have to say. You guys are the best value by far of anybody that comes in front of us. The amount of. Work because of the running of volunteer EMS in a town. It's unbelievable what you guys do. So.
Takes about fifty of us and everyone pitches in in different ways.
The town owes you guys a debt of gratitude. And every time you're out there, you know, if people aren't saying thank you, then all twelve of us want us. The twenty thousand people who live here want to thank you guys for everything you do every day.
And we appreciate the town accepting us being non charging. The state decides or you you file with the state, are you charging or non charging? And for all these years, we've been non charging and we love it. We love it that the town supports that service for our residents.
By far the best deal in town, bar none. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Amazing. All right. Now, last but not least, Office of Emergency Management. Russ, kind of welcome.
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
But but needed.
All right, so I shall share my screen. And. Thinking, there it goes. All right. So first and foremost, thank you, everyone. I will attempt to keep this brief and answer whatever questions you may have. Emergency Management twenty twenty three, twenty four budget request. So Emergency Management's mission is. Clear and foremost, to protect the lives and properties of the citizens of New Canaan. We plan and prepare for emergencies. We manage the town's local emergency operations plan. As well as we partner with the public school systems for their emergency action plans. And these plans run across every government department for our town in partnership with the state, with the federal government, as well as non governmental organizations in town. You can think of everything from Silver Hill to. The Voice's Foundation in town, New Canaan Community Foundation. Disaster response is a whole community response. We coordinate emergency response and recovery. You've probably all received a number of phone calls from me at odd hours, talking the residents through whatever the situation is at the time. We prepare response with other agencies as mentioned. So our office, as it is now a full time position, we have taken over. The responsibilities for the FEMA Public Assistance Grant Program. So after every federal declared disaster emergency, most recently COVID, which is ongoing. It's myself and team. Our team is two. It's myself and Phil Shibley is the Deputy Director. We actually managed that process with FEMA to get those grants and funds returned to us, which is quite a process, as I've learned, and God bless Bill Osman, who did it for years. We also work to provide maximum security for all of the hazards that may face the town. And that's done in partnership with WestCog, the Western Council of Governments and all hazard assessments that are done. And then planning, protecting, mitigating and responding and then recovering from those incidents. So exercise is a huge part of that. And right when we hit the ground, when I started full time. We had a disaster tabletop exercise in fall of this last year. Which featured every single department had. We had tremendous participation and we brought in two consultants from California. And Phil and myself ran it simulating a true category for hurricane hitting New Canaan, which is of course a possibility. We haven't had anything of that magnitude in. I think since nineteen thirty eight. And the realization for all of our participants of what would it be like if fifty percent of the trees in town were down? And we were truly isolated. As the chief alluded to, part of his presentation includes some of the lessons that were learned from that. We do not have the capabilities we should have for riverine flooding. Heaven forbid, we. We saw with one of the flash flood events that happened during the fall of last year with us evacuating residents at Jelliffe Mill Road. That that is very much a reality, unfortunately, as storms only are stronger and more frequent. We also partner with regional emergency coordination and participation. These pictures are from the regional. Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security Field Day Exercise. It's Sherwood Island State Park. And we contribute assets to the region and we are also able to use those assets from the region. And so our office works on a monthly cadence with the region emergency planning team, which consists of every single emergency management director for Fairfield County Region One. As well as chiefs of fire, police and emergency support function chairs, which include the people who are the representatives for police, the power companies, the utilities, the state and federal partners. We also do disaster preparedness. These pictures are a little leading for part of my my capital operating request. These are actually from the basement of Saks, which is in a longer term project. We're going to try to find a better home for these supplies. And as you might see on the bottom one, some of these supplies are actually dated from nineteen sixty three. So it, we are actually in very good shape. Jim Cole, one of my predecessors in this role, did a great job of getting us cots and disaster supplies. It needs to be refreshed. It has been a long time. And part of our role is having those things. And we started this year with the partnership and thank you for your approving the ARPA fund allocation for the YMCA. So that we can truly stand up a shelter if we need to. Lapham serves as a facility. But it wasn't really what would be a shelter. God forbid we ever needed to to activate one. So I'll move into the operating request. The operating request, as you can imagine, has some slings in the numbers. It was not a full time position before. Year over year, if you eliminate. My full time role, the change year over year is about eight thousand dollars. I mean, we started off with five, but we I did the math. It was about eight thousand dollars year over year. And that eight thousand is literally to buy replacements for the cots and things that you just saw. And also to buy probably a pallet of MREs because the the meals that we have in the basement of Saks are well past their expiration. So I can walk through the lines, just so you have them here. I'll start with. I think I just started dialing something. Hopefully not. We'll start with. Service contracts. Service contracts includes our Everbridge Call Out System, which is nine thousand dollars. GIS licenses, we have licenses so that we can, and this is new, actually, we worked with Tiger and Ty and Bond, our GIS provider. To be able to track power lines down, trees down, roads closed ourselves. And then also eventually we're moving to. Being able to share that layer as a website for our public. So they know what's going on. Right now, we're able to share it with first responders. So in event we get a major storm or something like that, they can look at their phone and know how they have to navigate to get to incidents. Longer term, we're looking to explore using the GIS like Santa Barbara did with the flooding they just had. Heaven forbid, we have to do an evacuation. We can also put those kind of layers on this tool. So these licenses allow us to do that. It also includes the other big one in that is the UASE sustainment fee. UASE is the Urban Area Safety Initiative Radio System. It is a regional radio system whereby every department in the region received a small allocation of radios. Fire, I think, got six or so EMS got one, police got one. And it's based on the state radio backbone. We have to pay our share fair of that network and it's designed for command level coordination. Not individual firefighters. So does, you know, different than what Albie's asking for, the chief is asking for in his radios for his first responders to be able to talk to Wilton. This is for large scale command and control from the chief level. Moving to onsite contractors, onsite contractors is, sorry. We're looking to get a retainer with our electrician company. We have a very large generator that was purchased with the ARPA funds, which is fantastic. And Bill dragged it drug it out and we hooked it up to the library and it ran the library fine. We know that it can run our sewer system or. Waste water treatment plant, but we want to be able to have a contract in place so that we know when we call they're coming. And that we're not competing against other towns. We have it in writing that we know that they're coming. And if there's money left over in that line, the same would apply for our fuel providers, although we have a very good relationship with them. Training. It's five thousand dollars to bring in. Outside consultants, whatever it might be to run exercises, just like the TTX we ran in the fall. The benefit of having someone from California, I hate to say it, they navigate disasters. Perpetually, it seems, and are the best in the business. So that was such a benefit for us to be able to bring them in. And every scenario we bring, we want to bring in different people. So this upcoming year, we want to do. Tactical Emergency Casualty Care, which is training across. And I think one of the themes you'll see here across this. Is our mission is focused on those activities that are across departments. I don't want to say things that weren't done or weren't thought of before, but the world has changed. And it's very important that across departments, there's a focus on preparedness, planning and execution. So then we have repairs. Emergency, oh, sorry, I did miss salaries OT training, the one up at the top. I want to clear. Point that out because I'm a salary position. Bill is a part time stipend position. So the OT training is the intention there is is that we want to be able, and it's very difficult for our police chief and fire chief. To navigate overtime costs. And at the end of the year, there's always that crunch, especially if they have a lot of people out on entry. We want this very small amount, three thousand dollars, which works out to be about six of their highest rate people at six hours. To be able to participate in these joint exercises. The disaster drills, the tactical emergency casualty care, to take the pressure off of them that they would have any. Concern about hiring someone back for these joint types of exercises that are so important for our operations. So that small sum, we would then work out to do the transfer or whatever, you know, works out best in finance to take that pressure off of them so that we know. I can ask for those kind of that participation in these exercises. Repairs, emergency equipment is just that. We have some assets that the state of Connecticut has given to us as a regional partner. We have variable message board signs. We have shelter trailers. We have a animal shelter trailer. All of which part of us getting them means we have to keep them up and running and they could use some, they could use some love TLC. They the generator in particular, and one of them probably needs to be replaced. Supplies general is just that, pens and supplies. Voice data is fill in my cell phone plus our share of the town's data. Costs. Uniforms and equipment is specifically for the CERT team. Providing our CERT team, for those who do not know, CERT is a completely volunteer organization organized under the. What is called the Citizen Corps under Title twenty eight under the state of Connecticut. And CERT provides an incredible free service to this town and have done so by themselves through fundraising since their inception. And I argued last year and was successful and I really appreciate your support last year. We're continuing that this year. To provide them with the PPE and equipment they need to operate safely, whether it's redirecting traffic, helping us with disasters. Getting the stuff out of the basement of Saks, I hate to say, if we ever have to use it. Additionally, they help us to run the Emergency Operations Center. So when the residents powers out, the trees are down, they're the ones on the phone answering, taking that burden off of. The police dispatchers who are trying to answer nine one one calls and we can field the questions about power outages as best we can with what information we have from ever source. And equipment emergency is, well, that's going to be where the shelter supplies. So looking to get shelter supplies, MREs. Some storage racks for that equipment. I'm working with Bill and Tiger and team to find a home strategically, perhaps Irwin Barn, but we're working through that. For the equipment because right now it's scattered everywhere. Our masks are in the second floor of Irwin, our cots are in the basement of Saks, which we can't even get to. So we're working strategically and this will help to enable that. And that's it for operating. Any questions? None. Moving on to capital. So capital, one thing that's been updated since this, the replacement incident command unit has been removed. We were seeking two fifty of ARPA and one thirty of. Capital that was passed on. We're going to, we're going to re navigate that and find a more cost effective solution. So the remaining incidence is a bulk fuel trailer in partnership with Public Works and Tiger and in his team. We conducted an inventory of all the town generators in the town. It's not all of them. And you would be surprised how many generators there are that run critical infrastructure, in particular. Pumps that move sewage and things like that across town. I took that data as well as their, how much fuel they have, what their expected time to run under load is and found out that we could run in a complete outage in town for. Three or four days, thereabouts, before we didn't have the ability to move enough fuel to keep things running. We were fortunate in Sandy and Irene that power came back in sections of town. So that was alleviated. This trailer, in addition to the fact that it would just be generally useful for the highway department. In Blue Sky operations, would allow us to move that fuel and keep everything running. The same goes if we have a fire truck parked downtown. There's a huge fire. You have to fill it on site. You can't move the truck because it has hoses connected to it and it's running that whatever the fire scene is. We could back this trailer up and keep that machine running during that operation. So it's just identifying a gap that we have right now. That can be used across, again, departments in emergencies. The quote I received was thirty thousand nine ninety three. I added a five hundred dollar contingency for thirty one thousand five hundred dollars. The second project. It's body armor for EMS and fire in discussion with the chief for fire as well as the Board of Governors with EMS, talking through Amy Kennedy. Our peers, our neighboring departments have largely, probably three quarters of them have this. It is four sets for fire, four sets for EMS. I I don't like to ask for things that I hope we never use, but I hope this is something we never use and we have it on the trucks and it's there in case heaven forbid we have an act of violence in town. This also goes part and parcel with the training that we want to do, which is the Tactical Emergency Casualty Care. If we're going to be asking EMTs and medical providers. To enter what we call the warm zone. So not the area where the assailant or whoever it is, but the area between that. That person has been secured, they're isolated, but the whole building itself hasn't been searched and truly cleared. We still want to get in there. And provide life saving interventions to the people in between and get them out of the building and on the way to the hospital. This provides some modicum of protection for those EMTs and firefighters going in. In that situation. So the ask for that is again, eight sets of ballistic armor and eight helmets. They last ten years, although in talking to the manufacturers of them, they last way longer than that. And so the total is fourteen thousand five hundred for that. Another one, again, cross departmental in the world of emergencies is Stop the Bleed kits. We, I think as a nation, started with how to stop someone, save someone from choking. Then we learned how to do CPR. And this is the next iteration, which is Stop the Bleed. Hemorrhagic bleeding is the leading cause of death. In traumatic injuries for one to forty, I think, six years old in the United States. It does not have to be acts of violence. It could be someone putting their hand through a pane of glass. It could be any number of industrial accidents, God forbid. Uh, God forbid, something were to happen in the highway department. And for a low cost, our recommendation is to place these kits alongside every AED in every town building, in the public schools, the highway department, town hall, and all of our town buildings. Uh, I brought this before the Public Schools Crisis Advisory Board. They unanimously thought that this was a great idea. And again, in the theme of partnership, and I've been really fortunate in the first six months in this job, is, uh, the level of collaboration and partnership between the, the chiefs and the department heads has been nothing short of extraordinary since I've come in the door. Um, they've already started the process of doing Stop the Bleed training in advance of this, so. Um, so that's that request. And then the last one, uh, similar theme, Chief Bassett was asking for tri-bands. Uh, I am also asking for tri-band radios. I'll take a step back to set the, the, the land here. The, the biggest capital item, which is, I don't have a separate slide for, is our, our continuing contract Motorola, which is our service, uh, agreement, so the twenty-four-hour service agreement, plus proactive hardware and software replacement, uh, which we signed three years ago, we're in year three of five. I was the first one to say at the time I didn't love it, and I will continue to say that I don't love it, but Motorola is the only game in town, and everyone, unfortunately, every single other municipality is in the same boat. Um, and so I am starting the process of, I just joined the region's, uh, communications work group, so that I can learn what our peers are doing and what the industry is doing, because there is a very good question, and, and, and I want to come back to this and the other bodies with a recommendation, when this contract is up, and we're at that point where we either have to negotiate another one, so we keep our hardware, software, and everything running, because just like your iPad, it expires, or it can't download an update. Should we move to the state system? The state backbone, and Chief Bassett mentioned, Wilton is moving there now. Stanford has moved. Norwalk is moving there. If we do that, our current radios will not work on it, because it's a different band. It's eight hundred megahertz. We're on one fifty-five. So for two reasons, that aside, I'm recommending purchasing three Motorola tri-bands, is these can talk on that band. When we move to that, we're going to have to buy them anyways. And the second thing is by purchasing three of these now, first, we'd have one that would be available for, uh, police. We're, uh, my first two, the intention is to give them police officers, because the police officers can't even talk on the public school radio system right now. They have to carry two radios with them, and that's just within New Canaan. But then to work with the service chiefs to see where that third unit should go, and this is continuing. Every year, I'm trying to acquire these radios to get them into our fleet of vehicles. So when we do have to make the switch, if we decide to go to the switch of the state system, we have a lower capital buying, because we've already got the radios purchased over time. Uh, but more importantly, it allows us to communicate with our, our neighbors and our peers. So. And that is our request. All right.
Questions for Russ? Anybody? Questions? Uh, Tom, Rob, Robin out there, anybody? You guys good? Good, good. Okay.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, Russ. Thank you very much. Very welcome.
Very tight.
Very thorough.
Attempting to be efficient.
Yeah, explaining.
All right, item number six, tax-supported capital projects. Sure, come on up.
So I will share my screen, but that's the project, so it'll be hard to really see each of them individually. They are on your tablets if you want to have a look at them. Um, so as you know,
Josh, that's the last, uh, on our tablets would be the last, uh, item, I think, right?
Might be. It should be Title Twenty-two, Twenty-two, Thirty, Tax Supported to Carry Forward or something.
Second to last.
Second to last. Second to last, okay. Got it.
Right, so as you know, um, the capital projects that are funded by tax support have a, have a lifespan of two years. Or after that two-year time period, uh, we go in front of the Board of Finance and then Town Council, and kind of get your approval to push those and roll those, uh, projects forward another two years or however long they kind of see fit at that point. Um, so in front of you, I have three lists of, of items. The first list is capital projects that are, um, planning to be closed. Just to make sure. So this is the proper list. So through this list, this is a hundred and sixteen and change, uh, projects that don't need any approval. They are projects that either came in under budget or funds were found by other means, and these items are going to be closed. That hundred and sixteen thousand gets rolled to the fund balance within twenty-nine-ten, which is the capital non-recurring funds. And part of you looked at the, uh, transmitter letter or the summary of changes from the Board of Finance. This hundred sixteen is getting spent on capital projects for twen- uh, twenty-twenty-four for, uh, for this coming budget. So are there any questions on these speci-? I know that's, it's hard to ask questions about each specific project, but in general, as it's closing projects.
It's, uh, it's refreshing, Josh, to see this kind of detail. I mean, you, you got an item on here for thirty, thirty-three cents.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, as small as they are, that we bring them in front of you before we close them out. There's, there's many that had zero, that just need to be wiped clean. Um, it's, uh, these departments pick these budgets pretty.
Well, precision. Oh, the taxpayers will appreciate this. This is really, really good.
I mean, one of the things that Ann has, has kind of brought into the mix, that wasn't the case before she came, was departments can now, uh, create a PO using multiple accounts for, let's say, uh, for fire. They have recurring capital costs for water supply or fire hose and so on. So now they can combine those two or buy from two accounts, so you drain one fully, so you're not left with thirty-three cents at the end of the day. So it's been administratively very helpful. So the second list is a list of all the twenty-twenty-two projects. Twenty-twenty-two projects, like I said, they have a two-year life, lifespan. Um, so these automatically roll forward. So there's nothing that's really, uh, needed on this. It's just informational. This FY twenty-two available number on the right is outdated at this point, because when this was produced a couple of months ago, um, they've been spending since then, and there's been, you know, these are twenty-twenty-two projects, so they're kind of allowed for two years. So those are automatically rolling forward, and that totals, uh, nine hundred fourteen thousand.
How do price increases impact this? I mean, if we didn't purchase this stuff and the prices are.
So, I mean, it's, it, it would be dependent on each of these, you know, it's, some of these could have been, not prepay, but they, they could have had the purchases or, or the PO set in place, or, or the price is locked in, and then paying upon arrival, or.
So some, some of it's contracted, but not all of it.
Right, yeah. It would depend on, on each of these, on each of these projects.
Majority of this was good, it's going to get, all of this will be spent, right?
I mean, the majority of it has probably already been spent. I think if this, um, maybe not majority, but I think if I reran this today, it would probably be closer to six hundred thousand that is getting put forward automatically.
Well, oh, this is the left, because I see like a police vehicle, because maybe they couldn't buy it or a cat.
Right, so with police vehicle, right, they, they could only buy a certain number because of the price change like they had explained. And so this will get combined with twenty-three or twenty-four to, to combine into, like, one. Or maybe it was just a supply chain issue that they couldn't get it in time.
Right.
Bend it for this year, so.
Right, so but then that was on their capital request, so that's not double counted, is it?
No.
It's just two different places.
So.
Are shown in two different places.
Onto, um, the, uh, the main part of things. So this last page or two is a list of capital projects prior to twenty-twenty-two, um, that, um, received approval to push, to roll forward from the Board of Finance. According to the charter, technically only the Board of Finance is needed to approve this roll forward, but traditionally, we've brought it to the Town Council also to, to roll it forward. Might be considered appropriation and might not. It's, you know, above my legal pay grade. I don't know exactly. Um, so this is asking to roll forward one point one, one, three, eight, three, six, and sixty-seven cents, so one point one million of capital projects. And these range from, say, twenty, twenty-eighteen forward, twenty-seventeen forward. For ver- a variety of reasons, um, whether it's, it's Board of Ed that has a very small window of when they can actually get some of these projects done, because kids are in school, or supply chain issues, or having, you know, five hundred forty-one dollars. Like I said, you know, fire, for instance, has five hundred forty-one dollars in a water supply, uh, projects that, at the time, they couldn't really combine two accounts to get to that, so they had to wait for a cost that was under five hundred forty-one dollars in order to spend it, which is kind of ridiculous. So now, once we roll it forward, they can just combine that with, with their twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-four, and then just pay all of them off and, and close those projects. So that is what a lot of these are. Some of these are just projects that hadn't, had the time to either start or get finished, and.
You have a little, you have a little star next to that last Wavy Trail Extension. Any reason for that? Is that?
Uh, uh, I don't know what the reason is. Truthfully, it was.
Hanging chance.
It's shifty grit.
I, yes, it's a good question, and that, that, that column was probably copied from either the budget book or copied from, um, Munis somewhere, and that star must have existed. Very possible.
Thank you, Tiger. Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, obviously, the level of, it's great that, you know, maybe the Board of Finance could have just pushed this through, but it's really nice for transparency. You know, this is all the things that we've been asking about, and, uh, we, we applaud the, uh, the effort to bring this to us. So any questions?
Oh.
Well, I do have one.
All right.
Are these amounts tied, like, we voted to approve all of these. Is there ever a connection to what's here, to when it was approved?
When it was.
Like, yeah, like when the town council approved it.
Uh, well, so.
I'm just thinking, if you ever wanted to backtrack to find, you know, when was that amount approved?
Year for each of the projects.
Sure. So you'd have to go through all your minutes of.
Well, so you asked a good question today about, could we get a presentation about all the projects and all, you know, as far as what stage is there? And this is about as close as we're ever going to get, because
Yeah.
when you think about the amount of time it would take, Josh, just to run that schedule and figure all that stuff out, where, where each and every project and each and every purchase, I mean, it'd be months of work.
The only thing this doesn't show is like what we originally proved if it went over.
Right.
So it would, if it went over, th- this shows what's remaining.
Right.
Well, you really can't go over, yeah, we.
Well, there would be another approval then at some point, like someone would.
Be an appropriation for that project or a transfer or something like that. Um, you know, a hidden column here is the amount that was actually budgeted for the project. If you wanted
Yeah.
in mass to look at them, you'd probably just have to pull up the twenty-nineteen budget book and see, you know, find the projects. There's no easy way. Yeah.
Yeah, well, it would probably have to be another code that you would have to put in there to tie it back to when it was originally voted on.
Right, well, I mean, when it was originally, originally voted on, it's just, you know, twenty-nineteen bulletproof vest replacement was voted in twenty-nineteen. Or.
So you'd have to look in that department for that year.
Yeah, yeah. That's as close as you can get to it.
All right. Any other questions? Anybody, uh, Robin or Tommy out there? Any questions on this? No hands raised? And we have to take a vote, right? Okay, so what, do you want to make the motion, Pam?
Good, so moved.
So moved, okay. We need a second.
Second.
Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Christina. Is Robin out there and Tom?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yes, I'm here too.
I'm Hillary. Thank you. So that's unanimous. I got Tom there too. Good. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
We'll see you Thursday night again.
Man.
Yeah.
All right, uh, need a motion to adjourn at ten twenty-four PM. A nice, tight four hour. That's a, that's a, uh, Luke and a mic.
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Aye. Thank you.